Good evening. The Board has been in closed session since 6:00 PM for employment of employee, student residency, closed session minutes discussion review, and approval of November 24th, 2015 closed session minutes. There are six Board members present, one absent. Could you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would ask that we observe a moment of silence. This was something the Board thought was important. If we observe a moment of silence for our five District 205 families who have lost a child this school year, two within the last week. Our thoughts are with them at this very difficult time. On our agenda next is a public hearing for the adoption of the 2015 Certificate of Levy. And I... This is something that comes on our agenda once a year. And if you can bear with us, we'd like to have this agenda item. It should take about 10 minutes. And after that, we will have public comments. And if the students who are here tonight could come first for public comments. But if you bear with us, if we can move as quickly as we can through this public hearing. Thank you. So I want to call the meeting to order for the public hearing for the adoption of the 2015 Certificate of Levy. We need a roll call vote.
Mr. Collins is absent. Dr. Harold? Mr. McDonough?
Present.
Mrs. Bistito?
Here.
Mrs. Stufen?
Here.
Mr. Bloom?
Present.
Mrs. Ebner?
Six members present, one absent. Okay, we have an overview from Mr. Welton. Thank you.
The PowerPoint tonight has not changed. It's the same PowerPoint that I presented a month ago. So I'm going to work through it fast, efficient, but thorough since tonight is the public hearing. The tax levy requirements. Tonight, the Board will consider the tax levy. And then we will file the levy with the counties on Friday, December 18th. The final EAVs and the tax extensions will get that information in late March. And then the first installment is collected in June and the second installment in September. This levy is based on the 2014 CPI, which was 0.8%. The tax cap limits our tax extensions to CPI. And the term "tax cap" can be misleading. It does not cap an individual's property tax bill or property tax assessment. It limits the existing... It limits the tax extension for existing property to the lesser of 5% or CPI. In this case, the CPI is 0.8%. But the tax cap does not apply to new construction. Debt service is also outside the tax cap. And the 0.8% is extremely low when you consider the last 20 years of CPI have averaged above 2%, where we've had some very low CPI. Today, the CPI came out for the... For next levy at 0.5% year over year. So the next levy... But the actual CPI for that... For next levy comes out January 20th. This just shows the relationship between EAV and tax rates. When EAVs are going down, the tax rates are up. That's where we were from 2008 to 2014. This year, EAVs are... Or property values are increasing, so the tax rate will go down. But no matter what the EAV does, the district is limited to CPI for its increase of operating taxes. This just shows the relationship, the inverse relationship between EAVs and tax rates. When the tax... When the EAV was going down, the tax rates were going up. Now the EAVs are going to go back up and the tax rate is going to go down. As I said, this levy is 0.8%. The two unknown factors right now are what is the EAV going to be and what is the new construction going to be? The entire York Township is estimated that EAV will increase by 5.5%. This doesn't impact... The increasing EAV doesn't impact what the property tax is that the district will collect. That just impacts the rates. The rates used in our estimates tonight used a estimated 5.76% increase in EAV. New construction is the bigger factor. We are estimating new construction at $35 million. Last month, it was a guess. I did get an estimate from York Township Assessor at a new construction EAV estimate of $32,300,000. So I think the $35 million is going to be a pretty good estimate. We'll find out for sure in late March. These are the estimates. Even though we are levying in the capped funds 3.8%, we are estimating that the... It'll be the... We're estimating that it'll be 2.55% based on the $35 million in new construction EAV. The overall tax, we're estimating 3.2%. But you can see that the tax rates will go down a bit. So that is the levy. I received a letter from a taxpayer that couldn't be here tonight. And she asked... She made a few assertions that I think are common misconceptions. She was saying that she opposed the tax increase or the levy increase because that EAV is increasing. And she said she's hearing 18% to 26% increases in EAV. But as I talked about earlier, that doesn't mean the district is getting more money because the EAV is going up. New construction is outside the cap and the district does receive more money due to new construction. So she also talks about all the new construction, new development going on and that we shouldn't levy so much because of all the new construction. But in order for the district to actually capture the new construction EAV, they have to levy more than the CPI in order to capture that new construction EAV. So I just wanted to point out those couple of misconceptions. So that's it. Any questions?
Any questions from Board members? Okay, thanks. Are there any public comments on the public hearing for the levy? Okay, with that, the public hearing is adjourned. Ellen, do we need a roll call to adjourn? Okay, the public hearing is adjourned. Moving on to public comments, regular public comments. If students want to come first, we can do that. Or I can just start with the first name here. If there are any students, if you want to stand up, that would be... Come forward.
Why is it inappropriate to recognize and respect the LGBTQ community during a special month specifically dedicated to acceptance? It is an established community. We celebrate like other minority groups. Why is LGBTQ different than those? We pride ourselves on being fair, open, and accepting to all peoples. We change laws to accommodate our differences. People don't accept what they don't understand. Our goal is to be respected and create a community of acceptance. Just by looking at me, you aren't able to notice that I was born with a female body. When my journey began, I felt scared and alone. But my family and friends have been extremely supportive throughout my journey. This has been the most difficult experience of my life. I'm finally receiving the help I need to make the transition. In light of recent events in District 205, it makes me sad and thinking that people are never going to accept me or others like myself. I'm a young person. I'm going to be able to contribute to society. I encourage everyone to learn more about the LGBTQ community and members like myself and be able to accept us as people. I'm proud to be part of ASIS. I'm proud that I found people who are like me. I thought it was me standing against the world for quite a long time. But when ASIS accepted me not only for being trans, but for being a human, my whole world was changed. They gave me hope and inspiration. I'd like to recognize Ms. Thompson, not only for letting me join, but for reassuring me that I do not stand alone. We do not stand alone. We are different. We are people. We are ASIS.
Okay. Can you hear me? Cool. Hi, my name is Elizabeth Trenta, and I want to introduce myself as president and proud member of ASIS, pansexual, and a student at York with too many finals tomorrow. With the superintendent, school board, and every member of the district, it's important to understand our similarities and differences. Talking about facts regarding the LGBT community is one way to celebrate these differences. By randomly enforcing rules that inhibit this ability, kids don't get to hear, "Hey, you're a part of this community that really cares about you." Or, "Hey, you're a normal human whose identity should be respected." And both of these things are very important for people to hear in a group that at large that can often get discriminated against. Not only is pulling the announcements defeating a large part of our club's purpose of informing, it's putting down the idea that things like gender and sexuality are important, life-shaping, and should be celebrated. This idea applies to every minority represented at York. YTV has featured announcements from clubs like Empower, Hispanos Unidos, and every other group that feels a sense of pride. It's unfair to take away this platform that reaches every identifying student and hinders random groups' freedom to speak about themselves. Most adults understand that sexuality is important. Even more adults know that growing teens are developing a sense of identity, including sexual orientation and gender. No matter how many jokes we can crack, it's important that everyone knows that they're normal, that the LGBT community exists, and yes, even what the definition of pansexuality is. For the superintendent to take away that right away just because one thing... One person thinks that being gay or acknowledging sexuality is icky is not fair. Just this afternoon, I was asked to interview with a friend of mine on YTV for a project on censorship, because this unfairness is felt all throughout York. We're asking as a club for our York administration to retain the power to screen York announcements since the system has worked successfully for years under their solid and firmly inclusive judgment. I also have, under the support of the entire community basically, about 52 pages of comments from people that I'd like to give to every member of the school board, including the superintendent. Should I give them to you? Okay, awesome. So...
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me fine? All right. My name is Sarah Breedlove, and my freshman and sophomore year, I was a part of ASIS. Now, as time went on, I realized my schedule did not permit my, well, being a part of the group, so I decided to drop the activity. But I'm still very close friends with the president and a couple of other people of the club. And I'm extremely grateful that we have an outlet for people who, like me and everyone else, wants to support and just find a community within everyone. And as time went on, I became a part of York Television, aka YTV. Now, there's two things I want to mention about YTV that is very important for everyone to know. It's that, one, we screen every announcement in case they're too long, too wordy, or inappropriate. And these announcements were none of those things. They had educational facts and promoted acceptance and had witty puns. And the second thing is that whenever we of YTV decide to add our own puns, we get a lot of backlash because no one likes puns. But these puns kind of showed the acceptance that the LGBT community thought that York had. But by taking these announcements out, it kind of really shows that we don't have that acceptance, especially during a time to celebrate this. And honestly, I'm kind of disappointed. Like, this is ridiculous. This is 2015. We should be accepting everyone at this point. And it's almost kind of an insult to the people running YTV, like we're not responsible enough to figure out what's inappropriate and what's not. And I just... I'm kind of very sad about it. And I wish that could change because I thought we were different.
Are there any other students that would like to talk? Okay. With that, I'll go to the speaker's list. Oh, there are more? Okay, one more. Come on. It's okay.
My name is Rachel Gould, and I am another member of ASIS. The purpose of ASIS is to further the York community's education on LGBT issues. And these statements are facts, though some may find them controversial. I think they need to be stated. The fact that we are talking about this is why we need these types of LGBT announcements, because many people are scared of what they don't understand. When educating people about LGBT issues, the point is to promote awareness, acceptance, and to let people who are struggling know that there's words to match their feelings so they don't feel alone.
One more student. It's okay, come on.
Hi, my name's Grace Akable. I'm the Student Body President at York High School, and I'm going to keep this very brief because I don't have anything prepared. But one thing that I posted on my Facebook and one thing that I spoke to at the eighth grade graduation speech that I gave and at the pep rally that I gave throughout this school year is that at York, I pride myself and I pride our York community in the fact that we have over 78 clubs, we have 30 varsity sports teams, we have a restaurant, a preschool, an auto shop, an outstanding visual arts department, a Grammy award-winning music department, and I take pride in the fact that everyone can find a place for themselves. I think that the announcements allow everyone in our York community to feel at home. And I think that it's important that we keep announcements in general because they're allowing people to feel at home. And by taking away one group's rights, we're taking away the rights of everyone because we're repressing them. So in general, I think that it's important to stand up and fight for everyone's rights. Thank you.
Hello, I am Katie Padberg. I've been in this district for 20 years. Currently, I teach eighth grade social studies at Sandburg Middle School, and I am the Elmhurst Teachers Council Union President. I want to thank everyone who is part of negotiations for their hard work, the teachers, the administrators, and the school board members for approving our new contract. This contract is a success for the whole community, and it was truly the result of a process that took consideration, collaboration, and trust in the best intent of all the parties involved. But this is not where that collaborative spirit should end. We all must continue to be professional and not to seek out failure in ourselves or others. But we must work towards supporting each other with integrity. I'm not advocating a lack of accountability. We certainly need that moving forward. But instead of looking for problems, we should be seeking these solutions together. There is no more time for negativity. There's already too much of that in the world around us. Now, there are those who may view the union, or teachers, or administrators with fear, anger, and mistrust. But these feelings of bias really turn us from our true goal. We must all work together for our kids. There are many difficulties that still lie ahead of us, and there are times where we may disagree on exactly what to do or how to move forward. But I believe we should never find ourselves working against each other. We should be working together on one goal: educating our students. I encourage you to remember the words of Abraham Lincoln. "We must not be enemies; though passion may have strained, it must not break our bonds of affection." The decision is yours. It's really now time to come together. Thank you.
Amy Thompson.
I was pressured when you clapped before the speech, but good evening. I'm going to stick with my script because going off-script is always bad. My name is Amy Thompson. As many of you know, I am the college and career counselor at York and one of the faculty cosponsors of ASIS, York's Gay Straight Alliance. I've been an educator for 24 years and a counselor at York for 17. I've served as a cosponsor of ASIS nearly my entire career at York. In October, our 11 announcements to honor LGBT History Month meant to recognize significant accomplishments in our country by and for LGBT people, to recognize well-known LGBT figures who endured discrimination, and to share interesting facts were removed. The announcements were brief and factual. We have only been told they were inappropriate. Let me first state that I debated whether or not to speak tonight. I was afraid of potential fallout. Will there be a threat to my work at York? I give my heart and soul to my work, and you can see why. To lose that or have it impeded is frightening. Then I realized that my fear is likely pretty small in comparison to the fear that these LGBT youth face daily in a world... In a world that may not... May not only devalue them, but in fact, a world that may actually condemn them and has. What is LGBT history teaching us if not to stand up against discrimination and fear? And so I'm speaking today to represent those who are too afraid, some of them are students. We do celebrate various history months: Black, Latino women, LGBT history, to name a few, because by doing so, we attempt to counter that whole populations of people have been discounted and even persecuted simply because of who they are or were. After all, if we don't take the time to consider our history, we always say we're doomed to repeat it. Even though many historical facts are taught via curriculum, much is learned outside of the classroom. And if schools are about teaching and educating, if we value things like character education, social-emotional learning, isn't it wonderful that we find ways to do this every day? York's daily announcements are part of our culture. We learn many things every day. Some things are mundane and others thought-provoking and conversation-inducing, and still others are hilarious. The announcements help us bond to each other, creating relationships. Research shows that education without relationships is ineffective. But if we don't talk to each other as humans, acknowledging our differences and our similarities, we remove relationships from the equation. Censoring the announcements is like cutting out a piece of York's culture and removing the relationship. York's daily announcements are so important that we have an announcement period built into the school day to keep us connected. It's a big school. In addition, an entire curriculum is built around the concept of broadcast communications, and the students in YTV learn great skills, sometimes leading them to find their passion in their career path, which is another part of what we're here for. The bottom line is this: The LGBT History Month announcements submitted by ASIS and approved by York's administration were nothing new or controversial. The removal of the announcements is. It leaves us wondering why, given the nature of the announcements and the history and culture of York, we have been given no guidance other than, even though it has been requested. I hope our Board of Education, in conjunction with our district administration, will take the time to consider all the implications of these district directives without understanding the history and culture of York. And I hope that these decisions will be reconsidered so that we can all move forward and get back to the positive, welcoming, curious, and educated culture that is York. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Young. At the November Board meeting, I stood before you, having just received notice that my daughter's instructional classroom and teacher will be moved next year from her homeschool of Fields to Emerson. I asked on behalf of the parents and children affected if the administration and decision-makers involved in that decision would meet with parents as a group to give us more information and hear our concerns. Since that time, I've met with Dr. Kostick and heard from Dr. Moyer that that type of meeting will not happen. I've been told that the decision is final and to prepare for transition. So now, I'm here to advocate for my child and her classroom mates. Our family's been at Fields since 2005. My daughter Nora's been at Fields School practically since birth, as she was carried through those halls as an infant in the wake of her older sister and brother. She will be entering fourth grade next year. She's active in the field running club, her Brownie Troop, and Indian Princesses, all comprised of friends and neighbors that attend Field School. Nora has educational goals in her IEP that are directly aided by her typical peers. She has social goals: working on how to approach kids and ask to play, how to start and maintain a conversation. Even with known supportive peers, this is a big challenge for my shy little girl. But year after year, she's gotten more confident and built upon each year's success. Now, this administration is planning to uproot her, to have her attend an unfamiliar school with unfamiliar peers and instructors, to learn a new and to process a new environment while also navigating the complex social world of 10-year-old girls. All this while expecting her to continue to meet her IEP educational goals. I couldn't comfortably ask this of my typically developing child. How dare you do it so callously to her as proposed in the form letter I received? This district is asking my nine-year-old to shoulder the burden that should not be hers to bear. If implemented, her educational plan will have ripple effects from this for years. Perhaps you could learn the lesson from our southern neighbors in Frankfurt-Moakena, who built a school based on enrollment projections, only to have it close when those numbers fail to materialize. Sometimes... fail to materialize. Sometimes, long-term planning isn't such a sure thing. To quote Hubert Humphrey, "The moral test of government is how it treats those who are at the dawn of life, the children; those who are in the twilight of life, the aged; and those who are in the shadow of life, the sick, the needy, and the handicapped." This is a test of this district and its administration. I speak for the kids who cannot. You only need to look around this room to see that the community will stand up in the defense of the minority. You need to do what is right and transition this program from school to school over the course of years. These students should be allowed to finish their course of instruction in the school in which it began. My daughter is proud to be a Fields Falcon.
My name is Diane Felko, and my son goes to Field School. The Friday before Thanksgiving, we received in our son's backpack, shall I say, a heartless letter from the Assistant Superintendent for Student Services, which made me sick to my stomach. The letter stated that due to the projected increases for next year, my son's classroom will be relocated to Emerson Elementary School next fall. I had to read it many times before I truly understood what was happening. My son was going to be traumatized basically by this move. My son Mark has Down Syndrome. When Mark was born, his older siblings were at Field. Upon learning of this diagnosis at Field, we were blessed with many gifts from the staff and students. Mark has been a part of Field since birth. He knows the building. He's been working toward independence with the school, inside of the school, and Mark has bonded with many kids, loves the staff, and even loves Mr. Joe the Custodian, who does an awesome Cookie Monster. Do you know how emotional I get every time a student runs up to Mark at the end of the school day and says goodbye? It warms my heart knowing that these same kids will be there to help Mark through Sandberg and onto York. Being a parent of a child with special needs is difficult. It is the hardest, most challenging, exhausting, and loving job I'll ever have. When you rip a special-needs child out of their world and move them to a new one, there will be regression. No friends, no familiarity, new faces, total disruption to their life as they know what they will regress. After many steps forward, finally, now we will have to start over again with a brand-new community. According to all of the district's charts and graphs that I've seen, there's no large projected increase to Field over the next three to five years that can justify the move of a few kids immediately. During the last focus group, a different chart shows Emerson is having more school enrollment versus building size than Field does. There is no reason why our kids can't be transitioned out of Field over the next three years. Look at the differences of Jackson to Hawthorne versus Lincoln to Jefferson in the past. The first was very problematic and stated, as stated in emails from past administrators. The second transitioned over time and went much smoother. My husband and I met with Mrs. Kostick, and we asked numerous times who made this decision. Many times, this question was asked, and many times, she failed to answer. We just want to know why this decision was made and who was involved with making it. We never got an answer. As a parent and a lifelong Elmhurst resident, I graduated from York, as did my husband. I would like an answer. To all of you board members with elementary kids in District 205, imagine your child is going to receive a letter in their backpacks this Friday. Your kids are being pulled out of their school and moved to a school across town next year. Your charts and graphs show no significant increase in the next five years, but we feel it's best just in case. They will be fine, though. We'll have measures in place to help them with their transition and their loss of friends. We'll even bus them over to get familiar with their new school. Now, take time over Christmas break and figure out why this is happening to your child. How would it make you feel? Even worse, how would it make your child feel? My son is going to be nine next year. He is a fabulous reader. He is writing, and his speech is fantastic. He has done nothing but flourish in his community at Field with excellent staff. The kids who need stability the most are the ones being forced to carry the burden of the district's poor planning. Please look at who made the decision here and ask if this is a student-based decision or a district-based decision. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mike Felko, father of Mark. There was my wife up here. I'm going to give it from the point of view as a spouse and a lifelong resident. I've always bragged on the town I live in, the school district I came from, the one my two older children attend. I've never had a negative thing to say about the community or the district. This is the only second time I've ever been in this building. It pains me to watch my spouse and her friends and the parents of other children with special needs cry. Our Thanksgiving holiday was turned upside down because of that letter callously put into a child's backpack. We may have never even received the letter, giving it to a child to deliver to his parents. I don't understand that. I have the most, highest level of respect for educated individuals. I also have the most confusion from educated individuals because they seem to make decisions that make absolutely no sense. I love my family. I love my community. I love all the special-needs kids that we've gotten to know. I love seeing older children look out for the kids. They are advocates for them and don't even know they're doing that. Our children have taught the kids that are in the regular classes more than any educated person could teach them. Thank you. To take this, and we have the word "community" right under there, Elmhurst Community School District 205, it tears the word "community" apart. Our children have been there. They know the teachers, as my wife said. They know the schools. We drive past her, and my little guy says, "There's my school. There's Field School. My school. My school." That won't be replicated. The change will not be beneficial to him. And even in the letters my wife spoke, we'll bus them there. Our son doesn't do good in a bus. That's why we live close to the school. That's why we are where we're at. The way it was distributed, the way it was communicated, lack of communication. Education is all about communication. You failed right with the letter. We're upset. We want to know how to make it right. We asked the school board, what is the process to try to reverse a decision? We were told numerous times that it's a final decision. I mean, how could you be the judge of the jury and the executionist? One person should not have all that power. I support everybody that comes here tonight for all of our reasons. This is why we're here. In regards to shredding of notes, I read that out there. No data should be shredded. I don't know what it's about. I just read it, and it makes me scratch my head sitting here. It's going to come up on your agenda. Whatever it is, should not be shredded. Thank you very much.
Well, good evening. I'm Dr. Joel Morris, and I'm proud to have been the superintendent in District 205 from 1999 to 2006. You know, while I am a resident of District 205 and a taxpayer, it's not really appropriate for me tonight to comment on the current controversies that face the District 205 Board of Education Administration. I would need additional information regarding the topic of emails, school announcements, principal selection, to feel that I can make some reasonable and rational remarks. Hopefully, that information will be forthcoming in the very near future so we can recognize that having a transparent policy means that information is shared and not hidden. However, it certainly is appropriate for me to respond to direct and indirect comments that I've heard being made, which question the judgment and action of the York High School Principal, specifically Ms. Diana Smith. Ms. Smith is one of the finest educational leaders that I've had the privilege to know. She has led York High School to heights that I could never have thought possible. She's done this through an inclusive approach and a real-world perspective that has been truly masterful. Her actions and decisions have created an environment in which the students, the staff, and the administration are second to none, and have provided the youth of Elmhurst with, I believe, the finest educational experience in not only the state of Illinois but in the entire country. While Ms. Smith and I, whom I had the honor to appoint, did not always agree on every issue, she has demonstrated an ability to deal with controversial issues by creating a true learning environment rather than a top-down, in-your-face decision-making approach. I asked the school board to recognize that brilliance and to acknowledge, whether privately or in public, that any mistakes that were made were not because of any action or decision made by the York administration. Thank you.
I guess I drew the short straw after coming after that. My name is Nainia Camardiner. I have lived here for sixteen years, coming from out of state directly to Elmhurst. One of the top factors for choosing and continuing to remain in Elmhurst was the reputation of the schools. We have even looked at moving, just recently, to other areas and out of state and have compared those rankings that we now see. In my sixteen years here, while serving the district through direct school involvement, I have never been so moved to come to a board meeting. Why now? Because I am saddened and embarrassed by our district administration based on the recent action to inconsistently silence one group as is You have managed to alienate a very vulnerable group within York and our community and put this district at great legal risk by inconsistently restricting one group's First Amendment rights. I, for one, do not want my tax dollars spent attempting to defend a civil rights case that might be brought about based on your rash response to a complaint. Would this have been the... Would this have been the same response to a group posting trivia about women's history? I think not. To anyone involved in this decision, you are not the moral compass for this district. If you want to push your personal or moral agenda on a school or other area of the public, then I'd recommend you look for jobs in private, religious-based schools or become a member of the clergy and serve that way. While I'm disappointed with these actions, I am so incredibly proud of this group for standing up for themselves in a respectful manner. I am equally proud that so many of our community members have rallied behind this group to show their support. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gina Brigham. I came here tonight to support the ASIS Club, the League of Women Voters, and the Parents of Field School, none of which I am a member but believe in all of their concerns. It is the recent mistreatment of the ASIS Club that led me to finally come forward and address the board. My topic is different than what most everybody has been speaking on tonight, not that I don't wholeheartedly believe in everything that everybody has discussed tonight. It's hard for me to speak right now because I am so disgusted and emotional about the plight of everybody here. It rips my heart out that such decisions were made for our most vulnerable children in the district in the manner that it was done, and there were better solutions to that. It's disgusting. I have come to discuss the changes that you are considering regarding the co-taught math curriculum. We have current, and I do understand that it's been put on hold. We currently have a very excellent co-taught math curriculum and teachers that teach it well and that my son participated in at York High School. He has now currently graduated. However, I was stunned to hear that you would consider condensing the courses when I have spoken to teachers and administrators to add classes to that math path. I believe there were three classes of Algebra A, Geometry, and Algebra Bree that were all co-taught. The disconnect came this senior year when these students were left with no co-taught course to finish their four-year math path to enter college. They were left to take Algebra II without a co-taught teacher. Due to this arrangement, most students opted to take a lower-level math course that did not count towards college requirements. My son opted to take Algebra II and was offered an A because he had an IEP. I was highly skeptical that this would be the best path. An unskilled, an unskilled A was not the solution for his math needs. The special ed supervisor agreed that many students, not just the IEP students, would benefit from a co-taught Algebra II course. They would have a full class of students. The co-taught course never came, and my son struggled every single day. The teacher helped outside of class. He utilized the math lab often, and he saw a tutor two times a week. Still, he struggled. We were very excited when he earned a very low C grade. Jenna Bodie-Nolan was his teacher, and she was quite exceptional, and we were lucky to have her to earn that very low C grade. My point here is that my son, along with all three classes of students in these co-taught classes, cannot just be put in Algebra AB with a co-taught instructor. I noticed by the use of Google that Dr. Moyer had used consultants to support his cost-savings approach and to use co-taught classes to increase class sizes and reduce the size of special education. With the amount of courses that we have recently added to the curriculum and keeping, and keep adding to AP, I find it insulting and discriminatory to take courses away from these students, especially when we have been told... Especially when we have been told there is not enough money in the budget to add the co-taught math curriculum. All the feedback that you need is from the teachers and the parents. If the students found that the work was easy and slow-paced, it would seem logical to remove the A and B course. But with simple phone calls and emails, I would venture to guess that is not the feedback you would receive. That is not the feedback that I am giving you. Those classes were very important and the building blocks for their success. The last thought I would like to leave you with is when new initiatives fail, can you go back and take care of the students that were the guinea pigs of your experiment? If we throw these students... If we throw these students in co-taught B and it is a disaster, how do you fix it? When do the, when do they learn those skills? Continue on their math path and graduate on time with the necessary skills to continue on to college? Are you willing to take that chance with your own child's future? Thank you.
My name is Deborah Sandstrom. I'm the mother of two... I'm the mother of two District 205 children, and we've lived here ever since they were born, and I have been very proud to be part of District 205 and have my children attending here. I'm here to speak in support of equality for all and to encourage vigorous work toward rooting out our individual biases for the good of our children who attend school in District 205. When I heard that the As Is announcements had been pulled, I emailed the superintendent and some of the board members. My concern was whether the club had been treated in the same manner as other clubs. I wondered whether the As Is announcements had gone through the standard vetting procedures governing club announcements, and if they had, whether the polling of announcements was biased. Dr. Moyer replied to my email very quickly, claiming that the action was not prejudicial and that he had stated to York Administration. In addition, he stated that he does not feel that the superintendent should have to screen school announcements, but that when the issue was brought to his attention, he addressed it. Finally, he implied that his reasoning was to protect instructional time and that announcements should be used to provide information about school events such as deadlines and schedules. The response did not directly address my question, which was whether the group was being treated differently than other groups at York. As we've heard tonight, the announcements had gone through the usual screening procedures. It is clear that the As Is Club has indeed been treated differently. Announcements were pulled despite having been approved by the usual procedures. The superintendent, who is not typically involved in the process of vetting announcements, got involved. Some announcements by other groups since October have been very similar in style and format to the pulled ones. It seems the board ought to take a look at what occurred and whether it was based on informed thought. I am speaking today to encourage our district to be wary of bias. The creativity, productivity, and intellect of a student can be suppressed through teacher or administrative expression of bias. This is based on research. Our district has consistently worked to create an environment conducive to learning, an environment that supports the creativity, productivity, and intellect of all children and teenagers. We've been seeing the scores go up and up in York. It's a result of something.[765.73][765.73](applause) I would add that the numerous clubs at York are part of all of this, and I thank As Is for the important role it plays in supporting the students. Finally, while pulling the As Is announcements has communicated a negative message, the turnout here tonight indicates that our community wants an inclusive, supportive atmosphere in our schools.[797.61][797.61](applause) I believe that if we are willing to look for and root out unintended bias or prejudice, we could turn this situation into a beneficial experience for our district. Having the announcements read in January would be a good first step.
Okay, Dana Steinecker.
Hello, my name is Dana Steinecker, and I am currently a parent at Emerson Elementary. I have two students, a first grader and a second grader that attend there, and also a preschool student that attends Madison Early Elementary. So I'm new to the board meeting. I'm here to discuss just some concerns I have as an Emerson parent regarding the November 20th letter that was sent out to 19 parents specifically, only to 19 parents specifically in the transition of their students into the Emerson school. This was a district-wide decision, but it was only made clear to 19 parents and not made clear to district-wide parents, or faculty, or staff, or students. I think if there is a district-wide decision that is being made, I think it clearly needs to be addressed at the student that it will, or the school that it will be implemented into, which is Field and also Emerson. This impacts Field students, but it also impacts Emerson staff and students as well. A few issues that I'd like to bring up is classroom size and availability. In the letter, it just noted that these students would come over to Emerson and that they would be greeted and meet with the principal and possibly staff. There's been no regard to the classroom size that is currently at Emerson. The mean average of students that are in the classroom right now are 23. The lowest is 19, and the highest is 26, 26 students each in three sections of third grade. I've been in the classroom as an aide with my son, and the classrooms are crowded. I spoke briefly with the principal today, who had little knowledge about the transition that it was happening, it was going to happen. I asked if there were available classrooms. She said possibly one, maybe three, and those included possibly moving a sensory lab for those students that use this integrated sensory lab with IEPs and 504 plans. Possibly the other one would be moving the fourth-grade classroom, removing a teacher and having another, possibly having another classroom for there. Our fourth-grade classroom is currently the highest-enrolled classroom. My concern is the cap size for the classrooms, as you know, as the board members and as all staff at District 205. Cap size is crucial for student success. When you raise it, you're losing the individual focus.[997.62][997.62](applause) With that as well, I am concerned about teacher certification and preparation. I adore the Emerson teachers and think they are fully certified and prepared, but I question there is a transition of the students and also staff from Field that are coming over. The Field staff has been very well-trained and has worked with implementing students into regular-ed classrooms. They have been able to use resources. There was no mention in the letter on the training that would be available for the staff that is at Emerson and also the transition for the students at Emerson to acknowledge and bring in new special ed students into their classroom. I open these students with open arms. Our students open them with open arms, but I also think there is a lack of communication. And with a lack of communication on the board part, there are a lot of community questions. When there's a lot of community questions, there becomes a lot of lack of trust, and that's very scary as an early parent that's in the community. One of the concerns made was the overpopulation of the community. I do believe in board notes that this was addressed in regards to some of the new builds. There are over 250 new builds throughout Elmhurst. We can't just focus at one school because we took on a few more builds in that community in which there may be even less students that are going into this community. I question that, the overpopulation as well, and I also ask to really do the research on the available classrooms that are in all of the schools as well. To finalize, I just asked the board and for Elmhurst in general to communicate your plan. The letter was very heartless. I was saddened. I don't have a student that are using these resources at Field, but I taught high school, public high school, for eight years. I worked with many students, broad range that they had, and it is very hard for parents to receive a letter with very lack of information. The letter was very definitive of what was going to happen. It sounds like it is very definitive of what is going to happen, but there is no information. I think there needs to be a mandated informational meeting with these parents. It's going to affect with the staff, it's going to affect with the students, it's going to affect as well.[1144.65][1144.65](applause) Lastly, incorporate all parties that are going to be involved. You incorporated 19 parents out of the entire district. It was a district-wide decision. 19 parents were informed. I informed a few parents at Emerson today. They had no idea about this transition. The principal said, "It's still in planning." If it's still in planning, you cannot send out a definitive, informative letter to these And lastly, you're in charge of advocating for our students. We advocate for our students, too. We entrust that you are advocating for our students. You are choosing the best of the best decisions. It did not feel like you had the best students, their resources in mind when you made this decision. You're taking a population of students that are at high risk, and they need the most consistency to succeed. The most consistency in what we're doing is we are going to remove them and give them the least consistent atmosphere now with new 504 plans, with new IEP plans, with no definitive answer and hope for the best in the transition. I'm not sure Emerson is prepared to take this on. I'm not sure Field is ready to let it go. I taught eight years again, and all I ask is that you be creative. Be creative in your decision. Possibly have a transition time of moving these students into Emerson, into a program, possibly not all at once. Let some of the students be grandfathered into the system. Again, Emerson is opening any student with open arms, but at the same time, please be consistent and advocate for our students.
Okay, Maggie Quigley.
Hi, my name is Maggie Quigley. I'm a York alum, class of 2011. I'm also the former president of As Is. Like many here today, I'm here to speak about the announcements that were pulled from YTV. While I understand everyone is entitled to their opinion, the removal of these announcements is a great disservice to the student body of York. As the As Is charter states in their mission statement, it outlines the purpose of the organization, and it states clearly that one of the main objectives is to educate students, faculty, and staff and the greater community about LGBT issues in an effort to reduce stigma, stereotypes, ignorance, prejudice, harassment, and hate crimes. This is also used to combat behavior such as bigotry. Facts are used to do that. History is used to do that. As a member of the queer community myself and as a history major in college, I speak to the aid that gay history has given me and the history and facts that I have learned and has taught me how to overcome, how to face opposition, and how to handle adversity in a peaceful manner. Most importantly, it has given me the tools to accept everyone's unique and diverse backgrounds. Deeming history or facts to be inappropriate or unsuitable in a public institution is disheartening. You cannot cherry-pick which parts of historical factual information is going to be discussed if your goal as a district is to produce students with a well-rounded education. Further, this infringes free speech and visibility of a minority group in our community, which is an extremely large concern for myself, as well as many of the LGBT alumni from York. Being told that our community cannot be freely talked about because it offends one member of our Elmhurst community is enraging. Silencing factual information about my community only fuels ridicule, ignorance, violence, and hatred against LGBT students. This creates a rift and a misconception that we are different than any other human being. I feel for the LGBT kids at York discovering themselves, being told that their community at large, the one that they belong to, cannot be freely spoken about on their announcements, just like any other community. They cannot be inspired by those that have come before them because factual information is deemed too controversial to be discussed in public school. I ask that you listen to those that come here to express their frustration and their sadness about the removal of these announcements, and that you know that As Is at its core works to make the lives of LGBT students better every day, one step at a time. To those lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, agender, genderqueer, pansexual, and genderfluid students out there, know that we stand with you and we support you.
John Sandstrom.
Yeah, hello, good night, I'm sorry, good evening, everybody. My name is John Sandstrom, parent of two kids from York. And while I believe Dr. Moyer did have good intentions, perhaps to protect sensibilities of some students and families, I do disagree with the decision to stop the As Is announcements. I'm sorry, board members, does this thing go vertical? My physical therapist always taught me to stand up straight.[1488.47][1488.47](laughter) I am a physical therapist, actually.[1491.52][1491.52](laughter) Looking back at our past, most adults in this room, myself included, were taught by our social environment to believe that other forms of sexuality were bad and something to make fun of. How often did we say to each other, "You're gay"? No doubt, we've come a long way since then, but stopping the club from educating its peers about themselves is basically still asking people to hide. Let's talk about what the morning announcements are for. Some may feel they're mainly for laying out the business of the day, and that's true, but however, they're also very valuable teaching moments, and the chance to listen to well-spoken peers over the loudspeaker can be pretty profound. I would like to read a few of the announcements that were written by the As Is Club. Let's pretend we're back in high school right now, in homeroom, 7:50 a.m. Here goes the first one, then two or three more. "October 8, Dear York, Happy LGBT History Month! Did you know that ancient cultures like the Greeks supported their queer members? They even show up on many artifacts. That pride is literally old as dirt. Love As Is." "Dear York, Did you know that the word 'drag' is an acronym? It's a stage direction coined by Shakespeare and his contemporaries. It stands for 'dressed resembling a girl.'" "Dear York, Did you know that Oscar Wilde caused a lot of controversy by being open with his sexuality? It was such a big deal that he destroyed his career by being in a relationship with Alfred Bruce Douglas. Please keep him in mind whenever you read at York here in our English classes," I add, "the importance of being earnest or the picture of Dorian Gray." "Dear York, Did you know that homosexuality and bisexuality are present in over 1,500 species of animals? Yes, that includes homosexual cows.[1600.63][1600.63](laughter) Love As Is." And finally, "Dear York, As October comes to an end, LGBT History Month..." This one wasn't read, by the way, obviously. LGBT History Month is over. "However, with all the changes that have happened over the years, we get to keep making LGBT history every day. Thank you for all of your support in this ever-changing world. Love As Is." These are announcements that were read by students, by the way. I wish I could be so eloquent in my speeches, in my announcements. Let's point out, though, that all of these announcements are educational. They tap into history, biology, and literature, and they're also facts. None of them attempt to persuade the listener to endorse or approve of alternative orientations. They simply allow a group of students to talk about the history of their culture. In this room tonight, there may still remain the basic fear that openly talking about sexuality will lead kids to become more active. Frankly, when I was a high schooler, I didn't need any help.[1672.37][1672.37](laughter) However, most health professionals and teachers know that discussion can help students feel supported, make better choices, and lead healthier lives. Respectfully to the elected board and the appointed superintendent, I would like to have the rest of the As Is announcements read over the loudspeaker, just as it was here, as they were here, after classes resume in January. And I'd like to personally thank the As Is students for standing up for themselves.[1710.33][1710.33](applause)
Okay, Cameron DiCanio.
She did a video.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry.[1729.37][1729.37](laughter) Sorry about that, there's a lot of names. Okay, Charles Lalibert. Lemibertay.
My name is Charlie Lalibertay. I'm a former York teacher. I retired in 2001, and I just want to talk a little bit about a history lesson in terms of As Is. In 1998, a very, very small group of students came up to me and said that they were very upset that fag, gay, whatever, was being used against students at York. That there were students who were either gay/lesbian or perceived to be gay/lesbian who were being taunted and bullied around the school. who were being taunted and bullied around the school. And they wanted to do something. So we started a gay-straight alliance. We met every week in the art department. And they had to come up with a name. And they simply wanted to be recognized for who they were. The whole purpose at that point of forming ASIS was not to accept bullying as an accepted form of teasing at York High School. I don't think it is right for any educational institution or any human society to accept bullying and teasing as an appropriate conduct. And I applauded those students, very small group to start, who said, "We want to stand up to the kids that are doing this." And so we started meeting, and we started letting our presence known at York. We didn't have announcements in those days. And so it's what we did, and I'm real proud of those dozen kids, or less, that would meet with me every week. And, and just, and I, we never outed the kids, they never outed themselves. I never knew who was gay, who was straight, who was whatever. But they were certainly there to protect all students. And that's how ASIS began, and I'm real proud that they're still around. Thank you.
And now for something completely different. Today, December 15th, is Bill of Rights Day. 224 years ago, Virginia's legislature became the first state to, the last state to ratify the amendments. So we're celebrating that day by exercising our freedom of speech, of course, within the parameters set by the board. I noticed that later in the agenda, you will apparently hear from the superintendent about a letter he received from Elmhurst City Manager Grabowski. Besides its stating there are additional District 205 properties the city would like to turn into dual-use land, the letter also says the progress on Bryan is moving forward again. Although I attend every full school board meeting and have for almost 25 years, I have heard nothing from this board on an intergovernmental agreement about an any Bryan deal. I have, however, heard Grabowski talk about the board giving direction to the superintendent on where they want to be. Grabowski also mentioned some property trade, shared services, and shared material storage facilities. These items would seem to have an impact on neighborhoods. And I don't understand why your discussions are not held in open session. One would think that the community might be interested in these issues. I am, I am calling upon this board again to return to discussion of possible dual use of district property for water detention in open session, as was done for the two years prior to September 8th, when the board has had chosen to meet under the closed-session exception, setting of price for sale or lease of property owned by the district. Since that time, the board has met in closed session four times under this exception. It might also be appropriate for the board to release the tapes of these discussions that do not fall under the closed-session exception. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Betker. I'm a community member. I live in the Jackson Elementary area. I'm a very proud parent of a 2015 York graduate. My child was the president of ASIS last year. I am also a high school social worker in a neighboring high school. All of these components directed me to speak to the board tonight. I really can't speak to the incident specific to York High School, but others have referenced that. What I would like to talk about, however, is the importance of each board member and the administration to become allies to the LGBTQ students. An ally is a person who supports equal civil rights, gender equality, social movements, and challenges homophobia, biphobia, and transphobia. Do you know what LGBTQ stands for? Do you know the difference between gender identity and sexual orientation? Because if you're not clear, you're in good company with a lot of people, so it's our responsibility to educate ourselves and each other. I would hope that the goal of the Board of Education is to provide District 205 staff with the best practice information and tools to create an environment that is safe and supportive of all students and staff, that every student deserves to feel safe and included in his, her, or their school, that every family deserves to feel respected and included in its school community, and that all school employees deserve to feel safe and respected in their work environment. I believe that schools have an obligation to provide a safe, respectful, and inclusive environment for all staff, students, and their families. We also know that the rate of depression and suicide thoughts, attempts, and completions is higher among LGBTQ youth than their peers. I will tell you that these numbers drop dramatically when a student feels understood, The ASIS club is made up of any student who wishes to educate themselves and others about the rights and needs of students. I encourage you each to take some time to talk to a club member, attend a meeting, and maybe even invite an expert to address the board for further training. That's what it's about, education. It's okay, we all need to be educated. I thank you for your time, consideration, and mostly your respect and dedication to all students. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Carol Pavlik. I lived in Elmhurst for 20 years. I have four children, one graduated from York last year. Yay! This year, I have a student at York, one at Sandberg, and one at Hawthorne. I'm also married to a District 205 teacher, so this means that the decisions for the district impacts my family in more than one way. The biggest impact happened during the last three years, when the teaching contract froze all teachers' salaries for three years. This squeezed our family to the limit, and I know this is not a unique problem. Last year, we made the difficult decision to sell our beautiful 2,000-square-foot home that we lived in for 13 years, and we moved our six-person family and our rambunctious dog into a two-bedroom home that's less than 1,000 square feet. Please understand, I'm not complaining. We actually love our new home, and we call it our cozy cottage. Even more, we love our lower mortgage payment. I only tell you this so you know that our family is willing to come up with a creative solution so that we could stay in Elmhurst, because we love this town. In late October, we were relieved to learn that the salary freeze was over. Thank you. But a month later, at the third Focus 205 session, an infographic was handed out, lining up a plan to eliminate 27.2 full-time teachers at the elementary level. In the next few months, when we hear from the administration and they talk about balanced class sizes, we know now that balanced is another word for larger classes and fewer teachers. When I asked a board member to clarify this, he told me that there is research to show that larger class size does not negatively impact test scores. So, so that in the eyes of this research, a class of 35 kids is equal to a class of Children are not test scores. They are human beings, and so are their teachers. I asked my eight-year-old if her class would be better with more kids in it, and she looked at me like I had hit my head. She said, "No, Mom, that would make it louder, and my teacher would have less time to help me." I'm losing faith in the district's higher administration. Please demonstrate through your actions that your long-term strategy for improving this district is more than just freezing teachers' wages and firing 27.2 teachers. Please tell me you have a more nuanced approach to making this district more financially viable without tearing down teacher morale in the process. Downsizing our home ended up being a very smart solution for our family. The building we stand in here tonight houses no students. This meeting could just as easily be held in a school gymnasium or an auditorium. Just as a start, I would challenge the board to consider selling this building, to come up, to come up with a creative solution that avoids increasing class size and causing more strain on our dedicated teachers and students. Thank you.
I'm like Sherry, I have one name. Good evening. My name is Barbara Pekizer. I am a resident of Elmhurst. I bought in Elmhurst 12 years ago because of the school systems and of the community. I pride the fact that I moved here. I raised my two children here, and my daughter Margaret spoke earlier. They both attended Lincoln Elementary, Bryan, and York. This has been a fabulous community. The schools are wonderful. I encourage you as a board to be transparent. I've been a board member on several trade organizations I belong to. I understand the trouble that goes into this. I understand your dedication, and I appreciate that. But I also appreciate transparency, because I'm held to it in the community where I serve. I expect that my community that serves me has the same respect back. I want to know what's going on, and some of the things that are going on right now are not being handled that way. The ASIS announcements that were squelched with inappropriate on every level. As a woman, any of you that are women, would be outraged if women's rights were squashed. And your daughters, if their rights were squashed, you would be outraged. This is not the way in a progressive community moves forward. I want to thank you for your time of being on the board. I highly encourage you to remember why you are here. We have been voted in by the support of the community. You can be voted out, and anybody who gets a paycheck from us can be ousted too.
My name is Bryn Larude. I'm a York parent. My three boys went through York High School. My oldest boy was one of the original members of ASIS. That was Carl, one of the original members. So I'm here on behalf of my kids and to support ASIS, which is a wonderful and important organization. My oldest son called me and practically demanded that I show up here. And I, you know, so, that's it. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Donna Wilber. I am a York parent. I have a graduate from York, and I am especially proud tonight to be a member, a lifelong member of this community. I have to say, this is one of the proudest moments I've felt living in Elmhurst in a very long time. And it's been a rough decade for a multitude of reasons I won't go into. I wanted to just speak out in support of the parents at Field School. My kids also went to Field School. I'm not going to be nearly as eloquent as my sister Diane and my brother-in-law Mike. My nephew Mark is an amazing, an amazing little boy, and the thought of him having to be moved and uprooted from the school that he's known literally since birth and has dreamed of walking to someday, he hasn't hit that goal yet, but that's been one of his goals since he's been going to Field, is that he was going to walk there on his own. Having that dream ripped away from him is heartbreaking, and the manner in which it was done is truthfully unbelievable. The decision does not appear to be made based on facts whatsoever. I mean, I looked at the projections that were used to make this decision supposedly, and Field School is currently at 413 students with a capacity of 575. I'm sorry, that just doesn't add up. Why this would have to be done so suddenly makes no sense. It was even mentioned at the November 10th meeting by the gentleman presenting, I apologize, I forget his name, that perhaps we could stagger the move, and within a week, letters were sent out. There was no discussion. I don't understand how that decision was even made. It sounded like it was a planning session, almost, of what we needed to look at as a community over the next five years, and the next thing, you know, decision was made. So I guess I echo the concerns of transparency. I don't understand how that decision was made. There doesn't appear to be any proper planning. No communication at that point had been even given to the teachers and community at Emerson, or the teachers at Field had even been spoken to at that point. And again, within a week, letters were sent out, and it sounds like it's a done decision. It's, it's just incredibly disappointing. I don't know how my sister and brother-in-law are going to ever tell my nephew this, if it really is going to happen. It's heartbreaking, and it's, like I said, it's really disappointing, and I hope something can be done to change it. Thanks.
This is pretty low. Hi, my name is Patty Iverson. My husband and I have lived in Elmhurst for 24 years. Our daughters graduated from Hawthorne, Sandberg, and York High School, and for the last 10 years, I have been teaching social studies and I serve as a varsity volleyball coach at York. My comments here tonight are regarding my concerns about the principal search for York High School. In this process, I attended a focus group before the initial interviews for the search for the interview started, and also I was a participant of the interviews for the final three candidates. Why did York need to hire a search firm to find the principal? District 205 just hired a middle school principal last summer, and there was no search firm that was involved. Diana Smith. Diana Smith was hired for York High School 12 years ago, and there was no search firm that was involved in that search either. There is no precedence for using a search firm or a high school for our district, and there is, to my knowledge, no precedence for it in this entire area. Secondly, the time limit. Why are we deeply concerned about a mandated timeline to present a final candidate to the board by today, Tuesday, December 15th, when York's current principal, Diana Smith, is under contract until June 30th of next year? Is this allowing our community to be invested in the process? The board did not begin the search process with BPW and Associates for the new District 205 superintendent until late last winter of 2015. The first focus group in this process took place less than two months ago, and now we're mandated to have a decision tonight? We are especially concerned that the announcement of a new principal may have been decided during the closed session held prior to these public comments that are discussing this Teacher and community involvement. While there was one day of focus groups held by the search firm for parents and community members, students, and staff to attend in order to gain feedback about the qualities that they would like to see in a candidate, at no point did the board or the firm survey the entire staff or the community to get consistent and compelling feedback from all the stakeholders involved. I participated in the focus group that was held at York, missing my volleyball practice, and only 14 teachers were able to attend that session. The search firm and Dr. Moyer participated in the first round of interviews after the initial screenings. No other stakeholders were involved at this point. If the objective of a search firm is to narrow down the field of candidates to present to Dr. Moyer so that he can interview them and make his decision, then why has he been involved in all steps of this process, negating the necessity for hiring a search firm? Additionally, no board member, York administrator, or York teacher was able to interview the top 11 candidates. The interviews were held at a hotel off-site, and Dr. Moyer was once again present. If the round of 11 were to be screened in an impartial process by the search firm, then why was Dr. Moyer present at those interviews once again? Why are we paying a search firm to do the work when a school district administrator is involved in the entire process? Once the field was winnowed down to a final six candidates, the candidates were interviewed again by Dr. Moyer and his cabinet at the district office. Once again, no assistant vice principals, principals from other buildings, teachers, or community members, or students were involved in this process, despite numerous written requests from York staff to be involved in this step. Board members, you were notified, or shall I say inundated with requests by many stakeholders who had strong concerns about this election process and wanting to have more stakeholders at the table with the final six candidates. We question the transparency of the hiring process for the new principal, the role of the search firm, and the extent to which they represent the interest of the teachers, students, and community stakeholders. Whereas important changes that are made at York High School are typically done after seeking the input of the entire faculty through surveys that are available to everyone, interview committees, small group discussions, and large focus groups. In this situation, the teachers' opportunities communicate their values for leadership in a position that's so important to our building were nonexistent. York staff and administrators were finally involved in limited numbers in the actual interviewing process at the final round of three, and yet our voices still went unheard. The interview panel was not allowed to ask any of their own questions or make any edits to existing questions. Some rooms did not even allow for any follow-up questions during each of the 45-minute interviews. There were significant questions, we felt, that were missing about curriculum and extracurricular related issues for York High School. And even though there was a draft sent with many of these important questions and concerns that we had as teachers from York, there were only two that were included in the list of questions. Finally, in-house disregard for York teachers. Dr. Chris Covino, who has been an assistant principal of curriculum and instruction at York for the past five years, did not move on to the final round of six. Mr. Covino is well-respected at York High School. The growth of York, as indicated by Reboot Illinois, the highest ACT score in York's history, and the strength of the initial PARC test results are absolutely attributed to his leadership. He is the only candidate with a doctoral degree, with proven success and experience at York, as well as a history of fostering positive school climate. I'm not saying he's the best candidate, and I'm not saying he should be the principal of York, but by denying him the opportunity to present himself as a candidate for principal to teachers, administrators, board members, and community members in a comparison to the other worthy candidates, the district has done him and York a great disservice. While it is clearly the superintendent who makes the final decision, an opportunity to allow us to believe that we are stakeholders in the process would have been invaluable in moving us forward as a school and as a district together. Given my concerns, which have been strongly voiced by many of my colleagues, I hope the board would consider a slowdown before making this major decision regarding many future years of leadership at York High School. I would urge you to allow for greater involvement of York teachers and administrators instead of giving them a mock seat at the table. It is my hope that the board, as parents and community members, will be a voice of reason for these stakeholders in this decision and the transparency of the process. Thank you.
My name is Leslie Stipe. I live in the community. I've been teaching math at York for 17 years. My father, my two sons, and I all graduated from Hawthorne and York. So I'd just like to say that I'm so proud of the students who got up and spoke tonight. I love teaching at York. I'm just really proud to be a part of this community. A month ago, teachers in the district had the opportunity to vote in favor or against a tentative agreement reached between the school board and our union-appointed negotiating team. I estimate that over two-thirds of the York teachers voted no, as I did, but the contract passed anyway. It isn't possible for me to talk about all the reasons I voted against it in the three minutes that I have, but I would like to talk to you about one issue that is very dear to me, the reduction in pay for the after-school math lab supervisor. Many of you are aware that York has a math lab next to the math teacher's office. It is open before and after school in every period of the day. Everyone loves the math lab. Students, staff, and parents agree that it serves an important purpose. Each math teacher at York has a supervision assignment that requires them to supervise in the math lab, helping students for one period for a semester. The after-school math lab is a stipend position, and up until this recent contract, paid the teacher who took it $38.66 per hour. To put this in perspective, after taxes, that is roughly one-half of the amount a York math teacher would make doing private tutoring. In spite of this, we sign up to help as we firmly believe that what we do is in the best interest of our students. After school, there are as many as 50 students in the lab requesting help in every math class we offer. The supervisor really should wear running shoes. It is truly over an hour of running in circles trying to get all the questions answered. It is a place for students to get help, work together, complete computer assignments, and be supported. In the new contract, the stipend was reduced to $25 an hour. No explanation was given for this reduction. I don't know who suggested the pay should be cut. All I know is that both sides must have felt it was an appropriate change, as it was endorsed by the board and the negotiating team. The savings for the district will be about $65 a week. $65 a week. So while I still believe that the school math lab is worthwhile, I will not take that job. I have talked to the teachers who are supervising it this semester. They said for that price, they will not take that job either. The after-school math lab is in danger of closing. This amazing resource for our students may not be available next semester because of this decision to cut the stipend. I'm urging parents and students to let the board know how detrimental this decision is to the learning at York, and I'm asking the board to take action to make sure that the math lab stays open. Thank you.
My name is Eleanor Cootree. I work full-time. I lead a Brownie troop. I teach religious education, and I'm the parent to three elementary school children here in the district, and they can't wait to wake up tomorrow and find out where that elf is sitting. While there's only a few days before the holiday, coming to this board meeting was the last thing on my radar. However, I felt compelled to come and speak about the recent decision to uproot the students from Field School and drop them into Emerson. With around 1,100 students having IEPs and several hundred more having a 504 plan, it's extremely troubling that this sweeping decision was made without any of the parental support. This administration made a choice to execute this decision in a way that is disrespectful to our students, to these parents, and to this community. Relocating these students will result in hundreds of hours from teachers and staff to transition all of these IEPs, all of the goals, all of the strategies, and all of the tactics, and these students will bear the brunt of that impact. You know our students in special education are the students who need the most structure. You're resting your solution on the backs of our most vulnerable population. What other student populations were considered as part of a solution? Students in the enrichment program? How about the students in the ELL programs? Was a change in homeschool borders considered? The lack of transparency is pretty troubling here. Even worse, we're solving for a hypothetical problem that may not present itself for another three to five years. We are taking care of taxpayers who are not here yet. We are requesting, we request that you please reconsider this decision, partner with these parents to do what is best for the students and their families and their siblings, to consider a phased approach. It is not too late to turn this around. More broadly, this community wants to know what your plans are for special education in the long term. What are your plans to encourage simple things like collaboration for special education teachers across the buildings? How and when will you train these general education teachers on the basics of inclusion? How will you raise, how will you raise the quality of education across all levels of our student population? This community has been very clear about expecting to work with a student-focused administration and board. Our own district website promotes that District 205 is transparent and it's responsive to our residents' concerns. We want to hold you accountable to delivering a remarkable education for all of our students, and this starts with you, with us, the administration and the board, in reconsidering this decision. Thank you.
My name is Joan Mannix. My daughter is a senior at York. She is not a member of ASIS, but I'm here because frankly, I'm angry. I'm angry that as a consequence of apparently a complaint from a close-minded individual and who found a sympathetic ear with Dr. Moyer, the information, the factual information presented to my daughter was censored. My daughter attends York High School for an education, not an indoctrination. I'm here because I believe that discrimination and censorship affect the education available to every student at York. It negatively impacts the learning environment of all students at York. And for that reason, the board presumably enacted and adopted District Board 205 Policy 710, which makes clear that educational and extracurricular opportunities are mandated to be available for all students without regard to, among other things, sex, sexual orientation, or gender identity. In my view, the decision to censor the ASIS announcements violates that policy, and further, Dr. Moyer's agreement with apparently a single parent who didn't like the content of those factual announcements violates the further provision of the policy that provides that the district shall not enter into any agreement with any individual that discriminates against students on the basis of sex or any other protected group. Simply put, it is my view that the erosion of the rights of any of our children results in the erosion of the rights of all of our children and should not be permitted. And I just want to add an aside, Ms. Thompson, my daughter's a senior, best college counselor ever.
I'm a 2003, wow, I had to think about that, 2003 York High School graduate, that's embarrassing. So it's my husband, you'll have to forgive me for my candor, I wrote these notes on the train because my kids are sick and it's not a popular hour for me to be here. So anyway, I moved to Elmhurst after 12 years of being away. I lived in 11 cities, 18 apartments, three countries, some in subtropical climates where I don't know why I moved to a place where the air hurts my face six months of the year, but here I am, and I'm bleeding out taxes. I intend to die in my house and never set up internet ever again. I just never want to move. So I really have a vested interest in the school system here. I have two sons. My three-year-old is hopefully asleep. My seven-month-old has stunningly been very quiet. I'm also very flush because I really care about this. I'm also very flush because I really care about this. We moved here because the schools are so excellent, and the people here are wonderful educators, and I appreciate that all of you serve here because I know how hard it is to be a public servant and be in a position where you're not here for the money. You obviously care on both sides of the issues. And I don't think it's necessarily you need to District 205, but there are people here who have invested in me in ways that I could never imagine. Alicia Bimche is in the back. She was one of the first teachers who showed me, who gave me the opportunity to participate in a social welfare project with the Hunger Walk. Diana Smith, much to her chagrin. I must have spent 15 years in her basement celebrating New Year's Eve with her son Ryan McClintock. Tracy Mayer's children stood up at my wedding. Dorothy Valentes attended the baptism of my second son. Amy Thompson was giving me career advice when I thought about switching careers. I'm deeply indebted to this district, and I have a lot at stake in this game. I can imagine some of the complaints that were heard were quite impassioned from a parent, too. I understand that they're probably trying to do the best thing for their children. And I, again, can imagine that in a very, very Catholic community, it's a very difficult position to be in. I almost became a Franciscan. Men, very frankly, bored me to death before I met my husband, and I was in the novitiate to take vows, but the catechism specifically forbids discrimination against gays. And so it's another reason that I feel compelled to be here. I'm very concerned about the rhetoric, both at the high school and university levels, about creating a safe space. Just because someone is offended does not mean they're right. And it's a symptom of healthy society to have people who are respectfully offended and who can respectfully offend one another and still here and live next to each other. The announcements are one example of silencing people who offend someone. They're very important. I don't know if you had... If all of you have had a chance to actually read the announcements, some of them discuss Oscar Wilde as a writer. Some of the other ones were regarding, you know, the rights are available to homosexuals in the United States. Anecdotally, when we were building my house and trying to live in Elmhurst forever, it burned down the week before we closed in this January. My two-year-old at the time was a little too fresh, but he was pretending to be a firefighter at daycare all the time. And when I picked him up, I was asking him, as we drove home, if... Who he'd played with that day? And he said he'd been playing firefighter, and I said, "Oh, did he play with Gabby? Gabby is his best friend at daycare." And he said, "No, Gabby's a girl." I was playing firefighter, and I thought I would nearly get in a car accident. So then we went through every profession and who can be what, right? Everything was girls and boys, girls and boys. They can all be, all the professions. And then we got to doctor, and my son said, "Girls." And I said, "No, boys can be doctors, too." He said, "No, Mom, only girls." Grandma, Auntie Christine, Dr. Taya, Dr. Loya, and just kept listing all the female physicians he knew. And it's such a strong indication that even at two, my son was able to connect only what he'd seen, only what he'd heard, to what he could be and what his future is. And I think as educators, the role of educators is to specifically enable those visions of someone's future. I want the students at York currently to be able to imagine a future where they can engage in the social contracts that they feel compelled to engage in, that are issued by the government, and they should know that they could be as brilliant as Oscar Wilde. I really hope that we'll consider changing the decision on this and all the announcements as we move forward. To quote the Care Bears, "It's never too late if you care enough."
The board appreciates student comments tonight especially and everybody else that presented this evening, and the board is aware of these ASIS concerns and the others, and has asked the superintendent for information on these subjects. More information, which we expect to receive before the next regular board meeting on January 12th, and the board will review this matter with the superintendent and other administrators and determine the next steps. So thank you. Thank you for voicing your opinions. Sure, yeah. I didn't hear what you were saying. No, that's okay. That's okay.
Hi. My name is Malcolm Renee Robeau. Just like your first speaker, Cameron, who invited me here today and who I am so proud of and inspired by, I am also a female-to-male transgender individual. I'm standing before you today to speak on the importance of educating today's youth about the LGBT community. Visibility and being exposed to our community is incredibly important, especially at a young age. I am so pleased to see and hear about the group ASIS and to hear that announcements were being made about the LGBT community openly on a television channel near schools. When I was in high school, there was nothing like either. I wasn't exposed to the community in my youth at all. In 10th grade, I fell into a deep depression and started to feel horribly suicidal for reasons I didn't understand, and I had no idea why I was feeling this way, because I didn't know that being transgender was something that existed. I didn't understand, and I had no words for how I was feeling. Through college, I caused myself physical harm, ended up in the hospital, was on tons of medications, and found myself developing worsening depression and intense anxiety. There were a few gay individuals that I knew of late in my schooling, but I didn't finally find the LGBT community until after college, when I found the strength to embrace and accept my additional attraction to women. Doing so, I was able to reach out and find others who had what I thought to be similar feelings on the matter. However, taking the label lesbian never felt right to me. It did, however, help me get my foot in the door to the community. I learned that our sexuality and gender identity are separate of one another. I learned that our minds don't always match the body we were given at birth. At age 24, I finally learned what it meant to be transgender, and at long last, the depression was lifted. I dove into my true identity, began my social and then physical transition, and was finally on my way to freedom and my... Freedom from my pain and discomfort. Today, I'm a 27-year-old man and a successful and contributing member of society. I studied graphic design in college and received my degree. I was working as a packaging designer at a travel accessory company for about five years, until a little over six months ago, when I left my job and started traveling around the country. For the last six months, I have spent time in 31 states so far to visit, connect, and make visible hundreds of other trans men. I've been spreading visibility in and out of our community to help others see that we exist, that we're human like everyone else, and that we are not alone. I've also been able to help connect brothers to one another to further help them see that it's okay to be who they are and that there are others close by who they can befriend, bond with, and feel at peace with. At age 27, I am finally comfortable in my skin. What I want to express to you today is the importance of educating and exposing our youth to the LGBT community earlier in their lives. Doing so may very well help prevent others from falling into an incredibly painful depression, attempting suicide, feeling helpless, strange, alone, or like there is something wrong with them. Let them know that we exist. Let them know that it's okay to be who they are. Please bring back the announcements and keep educating your students about our community. Thank you for your time and for having me today.
Is there anyone else for public comments? Okay, hearing done. We'll move on to the reports and presentations. Oh, yeah, you're, you know, welcome to... Yeah, we'll take a quick break, one-minute break, and then we'll move on to the reports. We're going to do the annual audit review. Thanks for being here. Okay, go ahead, Chris, if you want to introduce.
Yes, we have Scott Klein here from Klein, Hall &amp; Associates to present the annual audit.
Thanks, Chris. All right, so we're here to look at the June 30th, 2015 audit, and I will briefly talk about the report and then go into some of the highlights and talk about some of the conditions of the district. Basically, this is a comprehensive annual financial report. It's in a similar fashion and layout as it was last year. Last year's report was submitted to ASBO International for recognition, and it did receive the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, which really means that, you know, it was graded by a panel of other CPAs, basically, that came through and decided that this report represents the highest-quality-type governmental report that you can do. It is, like I said, laid out in a fashion similar to last year. It starts out with an introductory section, which has some nice letters in there talking about the... What's going on over the last year with the district? And it's good for non-readers, people who are not familiar with the district. They can see a lot of concise information in there, talking about the last year's activity. It then goes into the actual financial statements, of course, where it lays out all the funds. The farther back you go, the more detailed it gets, and it culminates with what makes this a comprehensive report, the statistical section, which a lot of reports do not have. And this presents a myriad of statistical information over 10 years, a lot of the schedules, and it can really give you a good sense of where the district's been and potentially where it's going with a lot of different things, such as its debt, its tax rates, population, you know, really a myriad of different types of information are contained in this report. As far as one thing that's outside of this report, we do submit another report to the State Board of Education. It's called AFR, an annual financial report. In that report, this year, the district scored a 3.8 out of 4.0 for its financial condition. There's a financial profile score that the State Board of Education computes for every single district. And so the district scored 3.8 out of 4, which was a recognition, which was, you know, considered one of the highest scores you can get, basically, through the state. With regards to some of the tidbits of the differences in this report from last year, the largest difference stems from the pension plans. There was a new pronouncement that came through this year that required all governmental units, basically, to accrue within their financial statements the pension plan liabilities that they have for any defined benefit or defined contribution pension plans they have. So TRS and IMRF are your two defined benefit plans that you have for certified and non-certified personnel. Prior to this year, those liabilities were not included in these financial statements. So they were incorporated in here this year. They do have an effect on the net assets of the district. I think the total amount of accruals are about $12 million for those two pension plans, basically. And I was going to flip real quick just to get to the exact number here. They were... Yeah, they accounted for about $12 million of liability.
Page is that on?
That can be seen on page 36, which talks about the overall debt of the district. So if we turn to page 36, there's actually three lines that pertain to pensions. The post-employment benefits that the district offers to its teachers and non-certifies, that's been in the financial statements for a number of years. That's $7.3 million. The two that were new this year are the net pension liabilities for TRS and IMRF, and those are the last two lines in that table, and they total approximately $11.6 million. Certainly.
Can we pull this up? Just... I know we have it in front of us. Can we pull...
Okay.
Can we pull it up? I apologize.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Okay, we'll do a summary of this.
Right, right. Because I think the CAFR is electronic on your website, but I don't think we brought a copy here. All right, right. So that was a big change, obviously, for this year's report, and the pension reporting is continuing to change. There's actually another pronouncement that's going to change the post-employment benefits footnote and cause more liability to be accrued in there. That's upcoming in the next two to three years. It's good reporting. It gives a lot of good information, these pension plans. Obviously, there's a lot to be learned from those liabilities and what they mean to the district. So that really, in a nutshell, was the major change this year for the district and its financial statements. I see we have some of it there. Page 36 was what we were looking at. Yeah, right, next page. There we go. So the last three lines on that table pertain to pension liabilities of sorts. Like I said, the post-employment benefit one has been there in prior years, and the two new ones are the TRS and IMRF pension liabilities. That was about, as far as going through the report in specifics, I'll let everyone read through it, obviously. It's good bedtime reading. If there's any specific questions about the report, I'd be more than happy to talk about it. One thing I like to mention when I go to board meetings is beyond the report, you know, we're hired by the board to be independent auditors of the district, and so we really look at the controls of the district when we come in for our audit. We look at the receivables and the receipt process. We look at the payables and the payable process and the payroll process. We then take sample transactions and look at those transactions to see if the controls over those transactions are as documented by the district. So we did that, and we're pleased to report that there were no material weaknesses found in those activities. So that's a good thing. Basically, the books and records were in good order. Chris and his staff have things in good shape for us for the audit. And, you know, while we can't really produce accolades in our report, we can say that there's no material weaknesses, which is basically a good grade from an auditor. So we like to point that out when we come to board meetings, obviously. Now, of course, if there's any questions on the report, I'd be more than happy to answer them now. Chris always knows where to get in touch with me. You know, if anybody has questions at a later date, obviously, we can address those, too.
One quick question on the lines you were talking about. On page 42, and so does this footnote change? The format of this still change? I mean, the pension footnote changed materially?
Dramatically, yes.
Right, even ahead of the next change?
Well, right, this is... This actually is the implementation of the new pronouncement for TRS and IMRF, so...
So that really, really big number there, that's the pension shift number that everybody's talking about, right?
Yes. That... The small number represents the district's portion of the 0.58 percent...
Right.
2.2 formula, which is a very minute portion of the overall TRS liability. The larger number is the computed TRS liability for the district for its pension plan, you know, under the state.
Right, and I think if I read this right, the state taxpayer contributed $18.2 million towards teachers' retirement.
Correct, correct.
But that liability is $332 million, which is what they're talking about shifting to us.
Yes, and you'll note in here, or when you read through this footnote, there's no offsetting asset, and so...
They don't have much assets anyway.
And I'm not sure what's... How well it's funded, but, you know, when you look at the IMRF plan, in contrast, there's an asset and a liability in the net of about $4 million.
Right, that's a pooled... That's a pooled plan, right?
Right, exactly.
So, yes, no, I think the TRS was, I think, last time I checked, Chris, 50% funded, maybe? Generously?
Yeah, that's the big question, basically.
So, yes. So at any rate, just to give you guys a sense of what's facing us, if they shift a pension obligation our way, that's the number.
Yeah, less any funding, which, like you said, is a big question mark at this point. So, yeah, that's a big number. It's out there. It's not going to be accrued in the financial statements because it's not required to be. You know, right now, it's the state's obligation, but it is a number to be aware of.
Will they be disclosing anything around funded status to us?
That's a good question, actually. This...
Since we have to disclose the liability, will they give us any sense of our pro... Rat of share of the assets?
Yeah, I would say probably not. They've given... This wealth of information came from TRS, you know, and IMRF, and so they basically produced the numbers that they had to under this new pronouncement, this GASB 68. And so TRS footnote is a little different format from the IMRF footnote because there are two different types of plans. And, yeah, I don't think they're going to give you anything but the required minimum, which in this case doesn't talk about funded status.
Is there a way to ask for it? Is there a way to ask for it?
I suppose you could call TRS.
In the interest of transparency, it would be helpful if big numbers like this showed up in the right place.
And to see what their response would be, yes. I would probably think that would be the way to go.
Alright, just to clarify. So the major difference from previous years to this report is that we, that the state is mandating us to show our pension, net pension liability that they have highlighted as .58 percent right now that we would be responsible for.
Correct.
And then the total number of pension, 100% payout.
Right, so the footnote highlights both of those numbers. The $7.2 million is actually accrued within your financial statements. So, yes.
And this is the first year that we have to include in audits, and it's for every district in the state?
Correct, every district is doing the same thing, unless they're reporting on a cash basis, which some of the smaller districts still do downstate. Then they're not putting this, they're still putting it in the footnotes, but they're not putting it on their financial statements.
So can you tell me if you can answer this question or not? Is this another indicator that this is happening sooner than later?
With regard to.
That the transfer of pension cost shift to the districts?
Honestly, I can't speak to that. Unfortunately, I don't, I don't think this tells you that. It's not gonna give you any information there. It's just strictly the financial information that TRS has been forced to compile, basically, to live up to the government standard 68, which requires this reporting by not only school districts, but all governmental units.
Correct.
So, you know, the city of Chicago, the state of Illinois, I mean, all the governmental units are reporting their pensions in this format from now on.
So it does show everyone what the liability is in every governmental body? And that's probably what the intent is?
Right, and this, this number atop of, you know, a relatively large number and then this very large number are in everybody's financial statements, not the same numbers either, obviously, they're different, so.
Correct, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Other questions?
Well, thank you very much. And like I said, Chris knows where to get ahold of me. If anybody has any questions after reading through the report, we're always around to, you know, answer any questions during the course of the year. And I thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thanks.
Thank you.
In regard to the student achievement objectives, while Michelle's getting organized, I'm just gonna give you, my report is very, very brief. As I try to do pretty much every month, is just give a quick synopsis of some of the work we've been doing with our leadership team on studying how we would like to, as a group, collectively approach school improvement. And we continue to work with formative assessment and teacher evaluation. But in terms of the latest work on professional learning communities, we did some work with a part of the DeFoe-Fullen book. It's called Loose Tight Systems in Action. And our presenters this past month were Drew McGuire, Peter Cunningham, Tammy Poole, Nikki Tamaru, and Deb Wright. And they facilitated some group interactive work on some of the concepts embedded in that work. So that's just my brief update on that. And I'll talk about tech a little bit, which is related to our student achievement objective on student engagement.
I had an opportunity with some other members of Learning and Teaching and some members from Churchville staff to attend a conference from INACOL. Once again, I was pronouncing it wrong. I was calling it I-Nicole, but it's INACOL. And it stands for the International Association of K-12 Online Learning. They had this symposium every year. It was their highest record of attendance, 3,100 attendees, which was wonderful. It was a blended and online learning symposium. But what they really do is they take four aspects that are really, really gaining a lot of momentum in education right now of online and blended learning, personalized learning, and competency-based learning, and bring it all together. And they, what we really learned, so I want to focus on what we learned while we were there, some things we've already brought back to our district and have started to implement or to start having conversations about, and where we want to continue our learning with this. When you think about a personalized competency-based system, one thing that we really studied there was, how do we do that in a blended learning environment? And we have a perfect opportunity right now with our MLI, that our students are online and have access to ways to demonstrate their own learning through a personalized and competency-based learning. Personalized learning is how do we create a system so every student can succeed? And then competency-based is based on standards. How do we, we have these standards. How do students show us that they are competent or proficient in that standard? One session we went to that was actually, given it's really about a four or five-day sessions, but they had two hours to do it. And this is a group that was just recently bought out by the Marzano Research. It's called RISC. And they go around the country and work with districts. And actually, the state of Maine now has just adopted a completely competency-based, students will be graduating with a competency-based report card. And this group was part of that work. And they really helped us think through, how do students know what the learning progression is? I have to learn to add so I can know how to multiply. I have to learn fractions so that I can learn ratios and how numbers are proportioned. Turning those learning progressions into proficiency scales, being able to really tell students what it means to be proficient in an area. And then following that up with capacity matrices, meaning this is the learning target or the standard. And we've been talking about learning targets here in this district now for at least the last two years since I've been here, even before that, in this district. How do I, how do I learn towards that standard? And then how can I show mastery of that standard? And that's what a capacity matrix does. And really, that capacity matrix and that thinking is what my team has brought back a lot to the district. We've started talking with some principals about how can we start thinking about bringing in some of these capacity matrices? How can we start thinking about competency-based and personalized education? My team has started some of the conversation of what would a curriculum look like that would lead to that? And this is just very initial conversations. For example, another group we have are SIF kids, which are students with interrupted formal education. We have a lot of students coming to us from Guatemala who are coming into us at Churchville and York. So they are middle school and high school age students, but they're coming in with not having any formal education the last five, six years. So not only do they have a language deficit, they also have not been in a formal education environment. How do you really work with those students? You cannot put them in a ninth-grade math program. But you also don't want to put them in a second-grade math program and expect that they would get up, they will never, ever get up to grade level. You really need that competency-based thinking, that personalized learning. So those are some of the conversations we are having. Another thing we've brought back to the district is blended learning, but in terms of teachers at this time. We'd like the blended learning to get to students, but right now, what we're thinking is blended learning in terms of our professional learning. Some of the classes we are offering will be face-to-face for two hours, for every two hours, and it's one hour of online, where they would go on, they would blog, or they would go on and do some activity online, which would really get to that blended learning. So that's from the district perspective, and I'd like Gina to speak through from the school perspective.
Good evening. Attending INACOL was a very powerful experience for us at Churchville. I attended with the three reading specialists who currently serve in a coaching capacity at each grade level, as well as our instructional technology coach. We attended INACOL with the purpose of bringing back practical, real-life applications for our staff, and it has already had direct impact at Churchville. Our teachers who attended were focused on the tools and strategies for all students, while I also was focused on a blended learning model that could specifically help us target the needs of our English-language learners to increase their achievement. Upon return to Churchville, we presented a brief overview of each session we attended. And this was intended to pique the interest of our staff members as well as foreshadowing future coaching opportunities. In the short time since we have returned, a high majority of our staff is already using the tools and strategies we learned at INACOL. With a focus on our students becoming information-fluent, which is where information literacy, computer literacy, and critical thinking come together, our teachers have been using these new tools and strategies in the classroom. A few examples are NearPod. If you've heard of NearPod, it's an interactive presentation, kind of like PowerPoint on steroids, which builds in assessment into the presentation. It's very interactive. So it really incorporates the two goals that we're really working on is our MLI and our assessment goals. Rewordify was another tool that our teachers brought back. It allows us to reword complex text into understandable language. This allows our struggling students to move from frustration to understanding as we build their language capacity. And another program that we are excited to bring back to Churchville in January is a program called SuperELL. And this is a social-emotional learning program especially designed to increase English-language learners' success through a growth mindset. The center of this program, the creator of the program is also an Elmhurst resident and a former ELL student-turned-Harvard graduate, Maui. Our teachers are thrilled with the information that we are sharing through the trainer-of-trainer models. And we are grateful for the knowledge we gained at INACOL and have been implementing what we learned with staff and students immediately upon our return. We look forward to presenting sessions during our March 4th Institute Day, which is going to be a middle school ed camp where we will be able to share our strategies with our Bryan and Sandberg counterparts. So those are a little bit of what we've brought back since, in the past month. Good?
That's all we got? Thank you.
Questions? Karen?
A question, but thank you so much for bringing this information to us and to everyone who's gonna watch, because it's new. It's something new that you're bringing to us. And I think that it's valuable for all of us to understand exactly what's going on day to day, not just the bigger-picture pieces, though. Thank you.
Okay, we've had scheduled tonight a report on the work that's going on with the middle school study related to the District Management Council. And Shannon is going to read a statement that kind of reviews where we're at in the district at this point in the process.
Okay. Recently, the Board of Education has been questioned about its decision to enter into a relationship with District Management Council, DMC. The inquiry demonstrated a misunderstanding of DMC and its relationship to the district. Consideration of DMC first came up at a board retreat in July when the concept of academic return on investment was discussed. The district is a member of several professional organizations, such as the Large Unit District Association and the Illinois Association of School Boards. The board authorized the administration to pursue membership in DMC. The cost of DMC membership is $3,500 annually. District membership includes up to 10 individual memberships. Individual memberships for the 2015-16 school year include the superintendent, five cabinet members, one district office coordinator, the York High School principal, the middle school principal, Churchville Middle School principal, and the Field Elementary School principal. Several school district employees are not employed by DMC. The District Management Council was founded in 2004 to help address the most pressing and important management challenges facing American educators. The CEO of the council is affiliated with Harvard University, and DMC has been selected for educational projects by the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. DMC partners with public school district leaders to improve student outcomes, operational efficiency, and resource allocation. Its membership network includes more than 125 school districts of all sizes across 34 states, representing over 3.5 million students. Indian Prairie Unit School District 204 in the Naperville area, School District U46 in the Eldron area, and Rockford School District 205 are some of the larger Illinois school districts, which are members of DMC. A middle school task force was established through the recent teacher negotiation process. And the idea of utilizing the services of the District Management Council to further the aims of the task force was discussed at board committee meetings in September. District administration worked with the Elmhurst Teachers Council, which supports the relationship with DMC. And at its September 22nd meeting, the Board of Education officially approved a 225,000-three-year contract with DMC to conduct a study of middle school programming, staffing, and scheduling practices, and assist with the implementation of any changes that may result from its recommendations. From November 18th through November 20th, DMC representatives conducted focus group interviews in District 205 with nearly 100 teachers, administrators, and parents. Middle school teachers will participate in a time study during the week of January 11th through 15th. There are several other components of the overall study as well, such as a thorough examination of achievement data. The administration, along with the Elmhurst Teachers Council, will review DMC recommendations and determine the best course of action that fits the educational priorities of District 205. A report is due toward the end of February with implementation work to follow as approved by the board. Thank you. Any comments about DMC?
Just want to point out that this conversation has been ongoing. I think there has been some concern that this was done in some fashion out of, you know, out of vision of the public, and this really not the case. We had a retreat where the idea first came up of return on investment. It was discussed in various committee meetings, which were public meetings that were held, they were open to public. We tend not to get a lot of attention or attendance at our committee meetings. But we still hold them openly and invite everybody who has the stamina to do so to come to our committee meetings where these things are discussed in sometimes excruciating detail. And then it came before us on our agenda. So I think any implication that this wasn't vetted by the board, I think is, in a public fashion, I think is a little misguided. And I suggest that we all take a look at the processes to make sure we are being as transparent as we are. But in this case, I'm very comfortable that transparency was present.
Thank you for that announcement. And I think in the, in the conversations today, we've heard a lot about communication and transparency. And obviously, we believe we have been being transparent, and we will continue to strive to be even more transparent. And we always appreciate any comments on how we can do our job better. I take that, take that to heart. Keeping with the idea of being transparent. Now, this information, this statement that has been read, is that going to be communicated out to the, to the larger audience? And I know there's a plan in place.
It will definitely be included in board highlights, which will come out later this week.
Information on this is also, if I recall, Ben, in my superintendent notes that have gone out to the community and also in internal staff communications. So I have tried to, both internally and externally, note that the district has been engaged in this process.
I just want to mention, too, that, you know, they were hired to make suggestions. And despite some of the things I've heard, we have not come to any conclusions, and we're not hiring them to come to those same conclusions. We have hired them based on, you know, really high, really good recommendations to look at the middle school structure, as Shannon discussed, and to come back with some recommendations. And as you said, there will be a report followed by, at an open meeting, that will be presented at an open meeting. And then the district, the administration, the board can then choose, you know, which recommendations to follow and which ones not to follow.
Okay, anything else? Okay, next is the Learning and Teaching Committee meeting, report.
As Mr., excuse me, Mr. McDonough just mentioned, we have other committee meetings. And back in, I think it was the first, second week in November, the Student Services Department had the opportunity to present at the Learning and Teaching Committee meeting. Myself and the supervisors from the elementary, middle, and high schools presented. And we were grateful for the attendance of several of the board meetings at that lengthy meeting. As John said, there was ample time, a little bit more in-depth. So this will just be a quick overview of some of the highlights that we discussed and talked about. We did look at the responsibilities of our Student Services Department. Oftentimes, a big chunk of what we do is certainly the, working with our special education students and staff and our populations and how we serve those students. But we also oversee all of the students that have Section 504 plans based on a broader category of disabilities. The homeless liaison is in our department and we do have families in our community that receive services from our district for that. All of our buildings have nursing services, as well as some of our students that need individual, more intensive healthcare. We at times do have students that require homebound services or that they're in a hospitalization where we're also providing those services. And each of our middle and high schools certainly have school counselors, which again service our broader population of all of our students. A huge responsibility that every school district has is its child find. And that is an aggressive plan in which we look to make sure that we are identifying students who may require special education services. And that responsibility begins from the day a student turns three. We do work with the state's early intervention programs, so we are ready to enter those students into our early childhood if they do qualify for those services. So our early childhood enrollment goes up throughout the year. We plan on adding students each month based on their birthday. We are required to continue to look and identify students throughout their education career all the way up until the day before their 22nd birthday. This child find does extend to all students living within the Elmhurst School District boundaries. It also requires that we assist our students who attend private parochial or homeschool with identifying for services as well. And we do coordinate with all of the parochial schools that reside within our boundaries. And even if a student does not live within Elmhurst but attends one of those schools, we still have the child find responsibilities for that student. As a part of that child find, all schools must have a system for making sure that we look for ways to assist students that may be struggling. And that's often referred to as response to intervention. You've heard Charles speak of our benchmarking data to help us. That's just one piece of data that we would look at. We have teams in place at each of our schools, Student Services Team comprised of many of the individuals I spoke of previously, as well as general education teachers, reading specialists, and of course, our building administrative teams. We look to monitor those interventions to see the progress students are making and again keep trying until we find things that work effectively with our students. Even though every school must have response to intervention, that never negates our responsibility to work to identify students that may have a suspected disability. There's our current enrollment. Our Student Services Team and our Student Services Department certainly works to address needs of all of those students. But there's our currently, well, as of November 16th, these were the current enrollment of students. That number fluctuates throughout the year because of our constant work in servicing students and evaluations and so forth. This does include students at Madison, early childhood, all the way through the students that are attending our transition center and receiving services beyond the four years in high school. When we look at participation in general education, this is how the state breaks it down and it looks at your bell-to-bell minutes in any given day. And oftentimes, when we talk about students who are spending 80% or more of their day within the general education setting, that is referred to as a resource setting. And then as we become more intensive with the special education services, that's when we talk about our self-contained, our instructional classrooms and even for those students that maybe be, may be receiving services outside of Elmhurst School District in a public day program, a private therapeutic day program. And we do have a very, very small number of students who may be in a residential setting based upon their educational needs. And this is just a breakdown of the percentage of time that our students spend in the day. And again, we would only look at K-12 for this because obviously the transition center is only for those students that are identified. And our preschool, although we do have general education students in it, it's, we're not servicing the entire community, just those students who may qualify for those early childhood services. So of the students that are identified, this gives you a breakdown of how, based upon their percentage of time in the general education setting. And again, that, those percentages are given to us by the state and how we must report that and how we program for students. We do work with our cooperative, SACID, and they do provide with us a lot of professional development. They have an instructional support team, which we utilize those services for students that maybe are having more complex needs and we bring in another layer of support and expertise to help us program for those students. We have some students in our district that are attending public day program, often in the hearing impairment area, visual impairment. There are some programs in the county which they may choose to attend and the team may determine as best. A multi-needs program is available all through, you know, three through 22. We happen to house one of the SACID multi-needs program at Addison. We have our own multi-needs program there, but then there's also a SACID program as well. Our related services for occupational therapy and physical therapists are a part of SACID and also our itinerant services. So that's just a brief synopsis of an evening we had a few weeks ago. I certainly appreciated the board's time to present that in more detail and, but did want to provide you that brief summary this evening. Thank you.
Hi Kathy, sorry, I'm sorry to put you on the spot. So if you need to get back to me later, that's fine. But when you talked about the Appley students, was that the SACID students? And do you know what the numbers are for, how many are receiving services through SACID?
Between both SACID and our private day is, I think, right now we're less than 60. I think we have five students that are in the public day programs and the rest are in private or residential.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Go ahead.
Thank you Kathy for not only presenting tonight, but also to the committee meeting. I know that you've been here for a little over a year?
Correct, I started in July of 2014.
And I know that we've been anxiously awaiting this presentation even though you are new. So, you know, thanks. You also, I'm just trying to get a sense so that you can share how it all works throughout the district too. So, you know, you've got special services from the entire district perspective. And you also work with learning and teaching from a curricular. You work with the schools, with the, you know, the various different employee groups. And then you're working with the high school who has some of their own, you know, curriculum staff, as well as the transition center. And I just think it's important for everyone to know, I mean, that's just, I mean, you not, you have people that report to you. You also kind of what I'll call matrix manage, but not really have management, you know, but you, you're responsible for it all. And so it's just that, it's not straightforward. And so there's a lot of different relationships and different, I don't know how to say it, but it's complex and you have to make sure that you are covering it all, if you will, so that pieces don't get dropped. And so I think that's important for us to highlight here too.
Yes, and I'm fortunate, a wonderful staff behind me. I enjoy working with Michelle on the learning and teaching and the curriculum part of it. I think we all share that commitment that working together is better for students.
Okay, thanks. Oh, Chris? Go ahead.
I'm just, and this is, thank you for the presentation, helpful. One of the questions we had, and it had come up a few years ago when Meg was here, it was about effectiveness and outcomes. And there was some data that was presented at the time that we never got back. I don't think, it never came more than once. And that would just be a question for a future meeting, but I would be very interested in kind of, and I know this is a tough one because it's not, every kid that's got an IEP has an individual set of goals and, but that doesn't mean that we can't measure whether or not we're achieving those goals for those individual kids. So how do we know that what we're doing is effective, that it works? You know, because I think we all care about the kids and it's more than just doing something. It's about doing the right thing. And so that's where I think, I think, I remember in the five years I've been here, I remember one presentation around kind of how we're doing. And so I would, I would ask that as we, you know, move on at some point in time in the future, that we could have that and that would be part of, you know, we have a lot of data and analysis around student achievement and park and things like that, but I would love to have the same scrutiny on our, on our program as well.
Absolutely. I can look into that and see what was information. I think Charles can probably assist me with that to see what was presented in the past and bring that back to the board.
I'll try to dig up to...
Okay. Thank you.
Just one thing, why don't you get away? I think one thing we found in the extended version, and I suggest everybody go, well, as many can, have the time to do it. Please go and take a look at the longer PowerPoint that's in the Learning and Teaching Committee for November, whatever that was, 16th I believe it was, and take a look at it. What you're, what stunned me was the breadth of responsibilities they have. And while it's not subject to quantification as readily as other things we did, it's a legal standard. And the legal standard is in the Acts, the very, the two Acts that are involved. But 1,096 students receiving services, 327 students with a 504 plan, it's a significant amount of our student population. And even if we cannot use a quantification method, we need to make sure it takes a central role and that's why it's going to become a regular part of learning and teaching in this full board meeting to get a report, something that we have lacked for a long time. And thank you for promoting that.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to approval of board meeting minutes. Are there any changes requested for November 24th, 2015, meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none, those minutes will be approved as presented. Okay, superintendent's consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda? Or would any board member like to remove an item? Okay, go ahead.
I move that the board adopt the superintendent's agenda items A, B, C, D, E, and F.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, moved by Emily, seconded by Margaret. We have a roll call vote.
Mrs. Bistito?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. That's six i's, no nays, that motion passes. Okay, superintendent's action items.
The first action item is approval of the resolution for the levy and that's been based on the presentations of the last two months. And obviously, Chris is, and the finance committee and the board, as evidenced by our, I would like to compliment everybody that's involved with managing our resources. I think our financial rating is very positive and we should feel good about that. So, but we would need a motion to approve our levy.
Can somebody make a motion? Thank you. It's getting late.
I, yeah, go for it. I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution for the 2015 certificate of levy.
Is there a second?
You can second it, right?
I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Emily, seconded by John. Any further discussion? Okay, can we get a roll call vote?
Mrs. Bistito?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. Six i's, no nays, that motion passes. Okay, we have one donation tonight for York High School. Emily, would you like to do that?
Yeah, I move that the Board of Education approve the donation of three cars at an estimated value of $2,600 to the York High School automotive program. This donation is accepted in accordance with policy number 880, gifts to the district.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Moved by Emily, seconded by Karen.
I just want to say, it doesn't say who donated these, but it's a 1994 Toyota Celica, a 2001 Nissan Maxima, 2000 Mercedes compressor. Anyway, these donations were made by community members, former students, parents of former students. And the current vehicles in the York program will require extensive repairs to maintain. When the new vehicles are acquired, the older vehicles will be salvaged by City Auto Wreckers. So I just wanted to say thank you. This is a very generous donation.
Okay, we need a roll call vote.
Mrs. Bistito?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. Six i's, no nays, that motion passes. Superintendent's communication.
We received four Freedom of Information Act requests, three commercial requests, which were granted, one requesting specific emails, which was denied. One thing that I did not include in your packet because the release just went out a couple of days ago, but I just would like to announce publicly that we're very proud that York High School has 176 Illinois State Scholars, which means based on a combination of class rank and standardized test scores, those students rank in the top 10% of, of the students in the state. So that's very positive. Also have an item on here, just for point of information, you received a preliminary memo by Charles. There was an article in the newspaper about the park results being released. We needed more time to compile a thorough enough report on the school report card. So this informationally, just to let you know that that will be coming in January. And then as far as the city stormwater communication, we included in your packet some information from the city, a letter by Jim Grabowski, and some associated maps of York and Jackson, specifically the, at York, the field that is by the front parking lot, not, not the baseball field to the right, but the one that sits kind of at the front when you enter the school is a piece of property that they're talking about. Those are sites that they've identified as potential future stormwater sites and wanted to make sure that it was clear to the board that that was, that that was an interest of theirs to enter into conversations regarding those sites. Unless the board directs me otherwise, it's my understanding that the board's interest is to work with the city to get an agreement on the gravel lot at Bryan. And once that would be complete, then the board can deliberate on its level of interest into looking at any other potential sites. I would tell you that the Jackson site is used for PE and student play. So that's the primary use there. The York site is used for PE, lacrosse, and soccer, mostly underclass soccer and mostly practice. practice, but just, you know, those are the sites that they're talking about. So I, I indicated to the city that I would share that information with you, and that's what I'm doing.
As a follow-up to that, I went to the stormwater meeting, was that last Thursday?
Yes.
It's been a long week.
Yeah, Wednesday.
Wednesday, last Wednesday. And two notable things. First of all, there was the, the statement that Madison's going to be started in the spring, and I urged their coordination with administration to make sure, they might want to start early, I said, please communicate, you know, we're, we're open to that. The notable thing they said about the gravel lot is they want it in the ground by, or to start moving the earth June 1. And I responded that it's really their project, it's really up to them. You know, their construction project, when they can get it designed, when they can, you know, let the contracts, but there is a negotiation of an intergovernmental agreement to, to move forward. I expressed that the Board was unambiguous in its support of the gravel lot portion of the project, and the consideration that's being examined is in the nature of exchanging the use of some city land, preferably near the, or I'm sorry, preferably with some efficiencies that will result from sharing facilities at the Public Works facility. And there have been discussions at the administrative level with city attorney to, to look at the values that were being exchanged. June 1, I, I think it's totally up to the city, it's their project, it's their schedule. I suggested that they be flexible in that, first of all, you know, that's an ambitious schedule, to do something of this magnitude, where you have two properties, the use of two properties being considered. At the same time, it is being done in the context of us having asked our community what it wants its schools to look like in the future. That was the fourth element of the community engagement process. Hopefully, it results in a very nice facilities plan that will guide our decisions, but this obviously is ahead of that. Not that we're going to slow it down and, and make it wait for the facilities plan to be done, but in the absence of a facilities plan, there are a lot of contingencies that need to be considered from a very broad perspective. So, just wanted people to know that that date is out there. The other thing they showed an interest in, it was moving forward with multiple projects. I thought this was change of position by the city, that the city and the district had agreed initially for the sake of efficiency to prioritize one project, the priority being determined by the city, and to let the city determine which it was. The city has said that they want to move forward on three projects, the Jackson, the York, and, and the gravel lot. I said I would bring that back for discussion.
So when I attended the one meeting I've attended, which was a few weeks ago, and then also in an email to Mayor Morley, I told him our reason for, you know, moving forward with these first two and, and holding off on the other two, and, and it's always been the same, and I think it's because the city was very eager to move forward with some of the projects. These we identified as the easiest. Madison Field, we were told by Madison School that they don't, don't use that field at that school, and so it was pretty easy, unlike Jackson, where, as you said, they use it for PE and they use it for lunch recess as well as classroom recesses. I mean, that field is used a lot, so it is very different. So since they were eager to move forward, it was easy to move forward with Madison, and then Bryan, I feel like is not a dual use, the gravel lot is not a dual-use piece of land, which I think, and I told them this also, I think dual-use land, people have a lot of different opinions on that, there's a lot of different science behind it, and a lot of examples of where it's worked and where it hasn't worked. So I think that's going to be a very complicated discussion and require a lot of research, so that one's going to take a lot longer, and that's why, you know, these are the two we're moving forward with. So I just wanted to back up what John said, that we, you know, those are the reasons why we, you know, we're trying to be good partners and move forward with what would move forward quickly, and why that's what we want to focus on, and then talk about the others later.
Just to slice it a little differently, Madison's dual use, but it's not crucial to significant activities of the district. And as you said, gravel lot is not dual use. As dual use comes forward, there's usually no risk on the stormwater use of the property. That's usually pretty clear cut. It's the uses that we have that could be adversely affected by a lack of caution, both in the design and in the terms and conditions of the agreement. Theirs is, theirs is going to work, ours, strong likelihood it might not, based on some of the examples of dual use that we've seen out there. And so, going back to the initial resolution that we passed, which the city asks us to say it, these properties need to serve their primary educational purpose, first and foremost, and to the extent they can then be devoted to assist the community without sacrificing that primary use, that should happen. So, difficulty is in the details.
I'll just throw one, one other thing, just from, from a historical perspective, years ago, it's been years now. When we first started talking about this, and Jackson came up, and we prioritized Madison as being an easier one, and one of the things that went into Jackson, too, is that there's a traffic flow pattern, a pickup pattern issue around that building as, as it is now, and that perhaps if we were going to do some storage there, maybe the best place isn't in the field. Maybe it's a reconfiguration of the parking lot, the lanes, maybe there's, the city indicated there may be some parcels that would come up. So, complex. I just want to make sure that doesn't get lost, if, for some reason, I'm not around anymore when that conversation comes up. But, but if we're going to solve, if we're going to move dirt, we should solve as many problems as we can, in the interest of, you know, it's all the same taxpayer money.
I just want to highlight, and we've, we've talked about the complexity of this issue, and we've also kind of touched on the timing here. And there is always this intricate balance, and it's, it's difficult and perhaps impossible to make all parties happy in any situation that we're dealing with. And when I look at this stormwater process, the concern that appears to come from the city is we are not moving fast enough on this process. And it's interesting to try to balance that, you know, we're not moving fast enough on this process for a group of people, and taking into account a lot of the other conversation we heard today was, we're moving too fast. So again, just being very mindful of the balance of the multitude of issues that we are trying to manage, and the, the challenge in trying to find a correct process and flow to keep all these tasks moving forward.
I agree. So, in Jim Grabowski's letter, he's talking, he states, I rejected his offer for, for presentation to the Board, and it's not a rejection, we just were prioritizing projects, Madison, then Bryan, and then we would discuss future projects at a later date. So it was more, we, as a district, had to prioritize projects, because we can't do them all at once, we just don't have the capacity to look at all the projects at once. So it's really a timing, just a timing issue, not a rejection. You know, we're, we're ready and willing to discuss all projects, it's just what, what is our timeline, and what's our capacity to handle projects? Okay. John?
Another clarification on the Grabowski letter is that there's some indication that we were not aware of the need and solution for York. But it was acknowledged that that was a later addition, a 2014 addition to the comprehensive York, the comprehensive stormwater plan proposed by Burke. It is, well, we're, we're going to need more information, because I think what was sent didn't have all the alternatives, all it's got is one alternative. So maybe, Dave, you could follow up with Mr. Grabowski and see if this was the only alternative in the Burke proposal, or were there other alternatives that, that were, inadvertently omitted?
Well, as of 10:43, whatever, tonight, my understanding, based on our last meeting, was when he showed me what, what their concept is for that, for some potential relief on the York property, that was the only area I identified. So that's what I know as of right now.
I'm sorry. Chris just indicated the entire reports on the city website, so I'm going to go consult that.
So, trying to wrap this up, what's the consensus? Should we will consider, or talk to the city about the other projects, you know, when the Madison agreement is done, or, just so we can let them know, timeframe? I'm sorry, Bryan? Is that the consensus? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think what we had said is, I mean, from a conversation standpoint, one at a time.
Right.
But then from an actual execution standpoint, we want to see how Madison works before we roll that into a true dual set of fields, just to manage expectations there. Doesn't mean we can't start talking about it sooner, but before we start moving dirt, I think we want to see how the whole, the field holds up, so.
And ready to move on, or?
Yeah, I just wanted, what I said to Emily is, and we've said this several times, but just to repeat, we're clear and consistent.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to board communications. It's getting kind of late, I don't know if we should table this for the next time, or, is it, do people want to give a quick update from the conference? Or let's wait? Okay, good. We'll, we'll do that another time. Okay, action on closed session items. Student residency, we have two issues.
I move that the Board of Education approve the hearing officer's findings that student, excuse me, students B and C are not residents of the school district, because said students do not, have not been residing within the school district's attendance boundaries on a regular fixed basis since at least the beginning of the 2015-16 school year. As a result, I further move that student B be disenrolled on December 18th, 2015, and student C be disenrolled on December 18th, 2015, and that tuition be charged from the first day of the 2015-16 school year through the date of disenrollment in the amount of $11,929.36.
There's a second.
I second.
Okay, moved by Emily, seconded by Karen. I guess we do, we don't need a roll call. Yes, we need a roll call, it's a residence, go ahead.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Mrs. Ebner?
Yes, that's six i's, no n's, one absent. That motion passes. Okay, next motion.
I move that the Board of Education approve the hearing officer's findings that student D and E are not residents of the school district, because said students do not and have not been residing within the school district's attendance boundaries on a regular fixed basis since at least the beginning of the 2015-16 school year. As a result, I further move that student D be disenrolled on December 18th, 2015, and student E be disenrolled on December 18th, 2015, and that tuition be charged from the first day of the 2015-16 school year through the date of disenrollment in the amount of $8,947.2.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Moved by Emily, seconded by Karen. Roll call.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yeah.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. That's six i's, no n's, one absent. That motion passes. Okay, employment of employee, York High School principal.
Making recommendations to the Board of Education on the hiring of principals is one of the superintendent's most important responsibilities. Under the Illinois School Code and Board Policy 360, I am pleased to present a recommendation to the Board of Education to approve Aaron DeLuca as the next principal at York High School beginning July 1, 2016. In September, I presented the Board a draft recommendation for a process and timelines for the York principal search. At that time, the Board expressed a desire to utilize the services of a search firm, and soon thereafter, the district entered into a contract with BWP Associates to conduct the search. I then solicited input from the Board and our top-level administrators in the superintendent's cabinet, and worked with the consultants to develop a search plan. To secure the best candidate possible, BWP recommended a December target for board action. In October, BWP conducted a series of focus group interviews that included students, teachers, parents, and administrators. Approximately 40 people applied for the job. Eleven were invited to screening interviews on November 17. I observed the screening interviews, and at the end of the day, the three BWP consultants narrowed the field to seven, and gave me the names of their top five candidates for interviews. I brought these names to Cabinet, which agreed with the five recommendations, and elected to bring in one additional candidate to the first round of interviews. Cabinet and two building administrators conducted first-round interviews on November 30, and narrowed the field to three finalists. On December 3, the finalists interviewed with three committees, each composed of students, teachers, support staff, parents, community members, board members, and administrators. Forty-two people in all, 22 of whom were teachers, administrators, teacher leaders, or support staff at the high school. Committee members were asked to submit questions for consideration, and ultimately, candidates responded to 16 questions. The first question asked the candidates to introduce themselves, and the final question allowed for them to ask questions of the committees. Of the 14 remaining questions, five were based on teacher submissions, one came from a parent, one focused on technology, and the remaining seven were from focus group information, current district improvement priorities, and interests of the other 20 committee members. That evening, finalists also participated in a half-hour individual interview with me after the interview committees, after the committee interviews. This rigorous process concluded with clear consensus of the interview committees for Aaron DeLuca. I concurred with the committees, and I am now recommending that you approve Aaron DeLuca as the next principal at York High School. Ms. DeLuca has served as the Associate Principal of Instruction at Wheeling High School since 2011. She also formerly led the English Fine Arts Division at Prospect High School, District 214, from 2011 to, or 2007 to 2011. Prior to her administrative role, she taught English. Ms. DeLuca holds a bachelor's degree in English from the University of Illinois. In 1999, received her secondary endorsement from Governor State University in 2003, and holds a master's in school leadership from Concordia University from 2007. At Wheeling, she has led the school STEM initiative, giving her a rare combination of expertise in the fine arts and STEM. She leads the school improvement and professional development teams at Wheeling, coordinates the Avid program, and works closely with the English Language Learners Division Head. She has also initiated articulation conversations with Wheeling's feeder middle schools. A member of the Executive Board for the National Consortium of Secondary STEM Schools, Ms. DeLuca has presented nationally on instructional technology-related issues in New York, Baltimore, Austin, and Denver. She was instrumental in leading professional development in related areas, including the Partnership for 21st Century Schools and the Next Generation Innovators Challenge. Ms. DeLuca will be a positive addition to our administrative team, and we look forward to the opportunity to welcome her into the district.
Here's a brief summary of the motion. The motion reads that the Board of Education, number one, appoint Aaron DeLuca as the principal of York High School effective July 1, 2016. Two, approve the administrator's contract with Ms. two, approve the administrator's contract with Ms. DeLuca for the 2016-17 school year at an annual salary of $155,000, with board pickup of TRS and THIS contributions, and other benefits as provided for in the Board's benefit program for administrators; and three, authorize the Board President and Secretary to sign the contract on behalf of the Board.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Moved by Emily, seconded by Chris. Any other discussion?
We had, we have, we recognize and we appreciate the success and the proud history of York High School. It was evident by all the people who came today and shared their thoughts, shared their opinions, and shared their ideas. An engaged community is a healthy community. It is quite obvious that York is an engaged community. It is also important that we continue to move forward and keep that same engagement going forward. It was just highlighted, and I don't need to go over all the information that was stated in our meetings earlier today, but just a couple of things that were pointed out on the history of York. We talked about the wealth of course selection. We talked about being able to engage all students. We talked about the continual increase in ACT scores, Grammy nomination awards, part tests. We talked about the 78 clubs, and obviously, members from one club came and represented their thoughts and their opinions on what could be done to make things better. We talked about the varsity sports, and this is really important. What we also talked about was that York was a positive, a welcoming, and curious community. And that is the, that is the piece that we have to continue to have in moving forward. We have to keep that same culture of positivity, of welcoming new members, and a curious community on different ideas and different aspects and different initiatives. So maintaining that balance, appreciating the proud history and the success that we have, and being able to look forward. Again, we're talking a lot today about balance, but maintaining that history and being able to look forward, look forward, and move forward with new ideas and new initiatives, and welcome those things that may be a little different than what we had before. That's the piece that's important. That's the piece that will keep York at the same level that it has been throughout time. And that is the piece that I believe this new recommendation of Erin DeLuca can provide York.
Anybody else? Thank you, Margaret. That was well done. Okay, we need a roll call vote.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
A hearty yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay. Mrs. Ebner?
Yes. It's six ayes, no nays, one absent. That motion passes. Upcoming meetings, January 12, Board of Education meeting here at the district office; January 13, Finance and Operations Committee meeting, 7 o'clock; January 26, Board of Education meeting. We're at the end of our meeting. This meeting is adjourned.